That's a full house. Greetings, everyone. It is Monday, June 18th, our second to the last meeting of the year of our regular meetings, and we are in council chambers and with the clerk called the role.
Councilmember DuBois. Vice Mayor Phil Seth. Councilmember Fine. Councilmember Holman. Mayor Niss.
Here.
Councilmember Koo. Councilmember Scharf.
Here.
Councilmember Tanaka. Councilmember Walbach.
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. And we are now going to go into closed session. Our topic is public employment. May I have a motion to move to closed session?
So moved. Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Would you vote on the board? And that passes with all present excepting Walbach, I'm sorry, excepting DuBois and Koo.
Tanaka and Koo.
Tanaka, Tanaka, thank you. I don't have my glasses on, I can't read them all. Greetings, everyone. Calling the council meeting back to order. We have been meeting in closed session since 5:00. I have nothing to report, and we will go on with the rest of the agenda. Welcome all of you to the chambers tonight. I understand there are lots of people who want to speak under oral communications, and if you do, give a, or get a card from the city clerk, fill it out, and they will add it to a list that's going to be up on the screen. So, the next is agenda changes, additions, and deletions. The only thing I would like to announce tonight is there will be a special council meeting on July 30th at 6:00 PM, just so that you can put that on your calendars. It's in the middle of our break, or toward the end of our break, but during council break, so it's somewhat unusual to have that. Any agenda changes, additions, or deletions beyond that? I don't see any lights on, so I would go on to city manager comments, and for those of you without an agenda, oral communications follows Jim's comments tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. Good evening. I wanted to share with our community that you are all invited to attend an informative panel discussion on Thursday, July 12th, from 2:00 to 4:00 PM called "Meet the Chiefs", which features three of our own chiefs: Fire Chief Eric Nickel, new police chief Bob Johnson, and Director of Emergency Services Ken Duker. The speakers will focus on key issues in their departments and safety topics with a special emphasis for seniors, who are the most rapidly growing segment of Palo Alto's population. The event will be held at Mitchell Park Community Center in the El Palo Alto Room, and will include nine information tables with representatives from the Red Cross, Public Safety, PAMF, TeleVisit, and more. The event is sponsored by Avenidas, state assembly member, former council member Mark Berman, the city's Public Safety and Emergency Service volunteers, as well as the Palo Alto Chinese Club. Again, that is Thursday, July 12th, from 2:00 to 4:00 PM. Meet the Chiefs. I wanted to give council and the community an update on our neighborhood traffic, safety, and bike Boulevard project. Last week, we sent staff out to walk door to door along a stretch of Lewis Road to let residents there know about an accelerated effort to finish a, the construction currently underway on Lewis Road between Marino and Amarillo Avenue as part of the bike and pedestrian Boulevard project. They knocked on every door out there, and as part of our effort to try to finish this before the July 4th holiday, we're doing a full closure of Lewis between Marshall and Bruce Drive from, beginning last Thursday, June 21st, I'm sorry, from Thursday, June 21st, upcoming, excuse me, to Friday, June 29th. Our staff also discusses street closure with residents on adjoining streets between Ross and Greer, south of Oregon Expressway, that may see detoured traffic during this nine-day Lewis Road closure. This follows the council's special meeting on the bike project, where we indicated we were slowing down the overall project for more engagement. This particularly, this particular small stretch of Lewis Road was incomplete, and we thought it was important to finish it as soon as possible rather than leaving it lingering out there, uncomplete, half-done, whatever. Some of our staff is actually going to be not here tonight, but at the Palo Alto Buddhist Temple at 2751 Lewis Road from 6:00 to 8:00 PM to answer any questions and have further dialogue and conversation with residents in that neighborhood. Our city's public art program received two awards last week from the Americans for the Arts as part of the Public Art Network Year in Review, the only national program that specifically recognizes the most compelling public art. Chosen by public art experts from over 200 applications, the two local projects that were recognized included "Safe and Sound" by Tomo Saito and "Street Talk" by MAD artists Eric Abigad and Patricia McShane, who were featured in last summer's Code Art Festival, which, as you recall, had a number of art installations around our downtown. That event featured installations designed to capture the inventive and innovative spirit of our region and drew more than 10,000 participants in attendees. Speaking of art, join us for our free Friday night at the Art Center this Friday, June 22nd, from 7:00 to 10:00 PM. You don't have to worry about FOMO. You won't have to worry about FOMO, fear of missing out, as you enjoy thirst-quenching cocktails, eat delicious hot dogs, listen to mariachi music, and engage in hands-on art-making. The event will celebrate the opening of our exhibition, Paper Cuts Large-Scale Collage, and will feature a chance to meet many of the artists in person. More information is on the Art Center's webpage. And then, unfortunately, we were required today to put out a statement on behalf of the mayor in response to posters opposing the Palo Alto City Library's Pride Month displays, and those posters showed up at several locations around town. They were seen at the Magical Bridge Playground and bathrooms near the Mitchell Park tennis courts, and at a nearby street crosswalk. They were also posted on social media. As our mayor indicated in her statement today, while speech may be protected by the First Amendment, the offensive statements included in the posters are something our community won't tolerate. We posted the statement to our website, distributed to our community as well, and I know that some of our council members were instrumental in ensuring that we had rainbow flag in the council chambers this evening, and there'll be more to come on this. Expect something next week. And then finally, this is that time of year when we conclude the hearings and the council adopts the fiscal year 2019 budget, which is a big item, and you have two compelling, complex decisions relating to initiatives that are on your action item portion of your ballot. So you have a long evening ahead of you. I say that because I did want to share with the council again where we are in response to the news about the president's hotel, the purchases, I understand, from, by a hotel group, who is, plans to convert the property to a hotel. I did want to tell the council that our staff is, we do not, first of all, we do not have any sort of formal application or submission from the new owners of the property in any regard, so the city's not in a position to actually respond to anything in particular. In addition, our staff is still in the process of actually reviewing what the factors that could be at play in any kind of city response to that application. It's uncertain to us as to whether or not what the hotel property owners want to do, what degree of review that would take by the city and/or approval, how much discretion the city council has. I don't expect we're going to have that answer before you guys go on your break, so I would just, I would just say that any folks who might be here tonight might recognize that I don't think the council's in position to take any particular action before you go on break next week. We'll certainly be continuing our review and our work during the break, and of course, you have a special meeting on the 30th, and then you come back formally on August 14th. So, I think, I think the council could get a pretty good sense of where the community members are on this issue, and just encourage us to kind of keep in mind the schedule that you have facing you for the rest of the evening tonight. And that's all I have to report. Thanks.
Good. Thank you very much. May I call attention to the flag that's behind us tonight? This is the gay pride flag, and we have a policy that says, on particular occasions, we either fly the one out front, or we put this up here on the stage. And I wanted to explain that because it's, it's in response to the incident that happened over the weekend, and I know many of you got a note from the city today regarding that. So, thank you all for being here tonight. As I mentioned, our next item is going to be oral communications. The vice mayor will keep the, will keep track of, of the lights and the timing, and also it would help a great deal, you see your names are all listed here, Valerie Stinger and so forth, if you would get close to the mic so that you're ready to go next, that will make it move more efficiently tonight, and that would be a big help. A lot of you want to speak on oral communications. So, under oral communications, we have Joe Hirsch, who's speaking first for Fred Ballen, Suzanne Keane, Becky Saunders, and Herb Borack, and then it starts with Valerie Stinger and goes forth from there. I'll read the names every so often, but you'll see that they're all up on the board behind me. Can you all see these? Are they big enough? Okay, great. So, Joe Hirsch.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A telephone survey is being conducted about the Palo Alto Reduced Office and R&amp;D Cap Initiative that will be on the ballot this coming November. Given the highly detailed analysis of that initiative the council authorized last Monday, we'd like to know, and we think the public has a right to know, if this survey is being conducted or funded in any way by the city of Palo Alto. If not directly by the city, is this survey being conducted by any person or organization in association or collaboration with the city, or at the request of the city? And has any council member requested that this survey be undertaken, or is any council member associating or collaborating with the people or organization conducting this survey? We think the people have a right to know that. The survey has many gross inaccuracies about the Reduced Cap Initiative, and normally we would not bring this to the attention of other people, but we think in this instance it makes good sense to do so, so they're not fooled by what they might hear. And I'm speaking not only to the people in the chamber here tonight, but also people on television who might hear my voice. If the initiative is approved by the people of Palo Alto in November, that it will force a vote on every new office building through 2030. That is absolutely false. That is absolutely false. Our initiative simply reduces the cap on new office and R&amp;D development in the 2030 Comprehensive Plan and adds a comparable provision to our municipal code. All project proposals will follow the same review process as they do now. The initiative will not change that. I repeat, the initiative will not change that. Another inaccuracy, which is almost unbelievable, that it would cost the city $450 million a year. Yes, a year in lost revenue. That, of course, is preposterous. Given that the city's total projected 2019 revenue is $616 million, with the majority of that coming from utility payments or transfers, it simply cannot be anywhere near that amount if, in fact, any revenue is lost at all. That the initiative is anti-jobs, this is also preposterous. Our initiative is not, and I repeat, not, a moratorium on new office R&amp;D development. 850,000 new square feet can still be developed during the 15-year of the Comprehensive Plan. That amount is equal to the historical annual average in square footage of non-residential development that Palo Alto has had during the past 29 years or so. The Reduced Cap in our initiative is not an annual cap, but an overall cap during the 15-year period of the Comprehensive Plan. Another inaccuracy, that our initiative was created by a group of extremists. This character assassination is totally inappropriate. Greg Schmidt, one of our leaders, is a respected two-term council member and former school board member. I served eight years on the planning commission. We are joined by other residents who have been and are active in community matters and feel that the Reduced Cap Initiative is important to the future health of our city. It is the character of these residents and other residents who volunteered their time that made us able, in less than five weeks, to get more than 3,000 signatures of other residents equally concerned about potentially excessive development during the 15-year of the Comprehensive Plan. The Reduced Cap Initiative will be on the ballot this November as legally required by the city charter. We reach out to residents every day to explain our concerns and look forward to a public discussion of the merits of our proposal based on true facts, not inaccurate statements and inappropriate characterizations. Thank you.
Thank you. And as you can see on the board, Valerie Stinger, John Vermes, and Michelle Kraus are next.
Good evening. I'm Valerie Stinger, resident of Palo Alto. You may know me as Chair of the Human Relations Commission. Tonight, however, I am speaking on my own accord and standing with the LGBTQ+ community. Standing with me is Stephen Lee. Overall, we all experience Palo Alto as a safe, inclusive community. We know, however, that sometimes our progressive language gets ahead of our actions, and there are some voices which are unheard in Palo Alto. And so it is important to recognize the good work of the library and its programming and our city staff for promptly addressing wrongs. For its part, the HRC is a deliberative body, not a reactionary body, and we are working to making actionable Palo Alto's commitment to a diverse, supportive, inclusive, and protective community. With regard to the LGBTQ+ community, in March, the HRC held a listening forum. It was cosponsored with the county. That was followed by a community survey, which just closed. At our June meeting, as part of our learning series, we heard from a director of the outlet programs in the high school. This, with other work that we'll be doing this summer, will lead to recommendations, which we will bring to you in the areas of resources, facilities, and training after your break. We have already made one recommendation to the human services staff, and that is to conduct sensitivity training, and they have already completed that program with the summer recreation department. I see the light says some up, so I will do that by saying, as always, we respect all that you do, and we're anxious to work towards any solution and help you in any way that we can. I see our roles as upstanders, not bystanders. We will be vigilant in maintaining a community that is diverse, supportive, inclusive, and protective. Thank you.
Thank you. John, is it Vermes?
Yes, that's right.
And pull the mic right up.
Honorable Madam Mayor and council members, I'm part of the longstanding community symbolized by the bricks and mortar called the President Hotel Apartments. I myself have spent over 40% of the total years of my life so far living in the President. More specifically, over 26 years, for over 26 years, my address has been 488 University Avenue, Palo Alto, California 94301. For a man who 61 years ago was conceived in Budapest and after a flight in an army transport plane was born in Boston and attended five different schools by the time I was 11, this kind of constancy is a big deal. What I'm about to say, what I'm about to ask, however, is not about me per se. It is about us, together. Those of us who form the social network that makes the President a community. We take care of each other, and in this vein, we are here as a group to let this deliberative body know that we stand together and we stand for each other. We all understand that things change. The question on the table, though, is must they change precipitously, without debate? With this in mind, I'd like to pass the baton to the next speaker from the President community.
Thank you, sir. Michelle Kraus. Dennis Backland, right after her.
Hello, Madam Mayor, and the council, and the city manager. Most of you know me as Michelle Kraus, the top fundraiser or one of them for the past president, and the Hyperloop woman who's trying to push transportation forward. I'm here on behalf of the President, and we are gravely concerned. This is not a dorm. We are so worried about the statements we've read about "buy right zoning." We question whether oversized buildings can be allowed for zoning that we've heard about. We are very concerned on the far ratios. We've done our homework. So, we are worried, we are concerned. Has the city met with them? Has the city manager met with them? Have you, Madam Mayor, met with them? What's been discussed? We've asked many of the council members, "Help us." This has been done rapidly. We are concerned, we are worried. Many have lived in closing at the President, including our beloved and deceased Gary Fazino. It has been home. It has been a launching pad. It's full of entrepreneurs, and doctors, and nurses, and teachers. We have a nurse who's not here tonight, who works at El Camino's OR. She has to leave. Why? She has to be 30 minutes away from a call to the OR. She can't mess around. She is leaving. And this is tremendously troubling. Disheartened. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking. Dennis Backland, Simone Boswell, and Ikbal Sarang.
Good evening, council members. Well, we have worked together before, particularly with Mayor Liz Niss and with Jim Keane during my years as the city's historic preservation planner. We picked up a program that was very contentious in the community and inaugurated a policy of collaboration and respect with owners, and after 13 years of that, when I finally retired, we had a program that enjoyed the very great support of the city and the property owners who worked hard in the preservation of their properties. So, collaboration in all things is certainly the way to go. I have read some of the articles recently where council members have made statements and the city manager, and I wanted to say I appreciate very much, and I'm sure my neighbors do, to the expressions of concern and sympathy for our situation that you have given. We deeply appreciate this kind of representation. The President, as you know, is Palo Alto's largest historic resource, and also one of the most important, a designated landmark designed by Burj Clark. And thinking of that, one of my concerns about this proposal that you will, may hear more about later, is the plan of the new owner to change the name of the hotel to the Graduate Hotel. The historic marquee that projects out from the President is made of metal, and the words... Oh, I am out of time.
You can finish your thought, Dennis. Go ahead.
Okay, I'll say I am preparing an article for the Weekly, and so you will read more shortly, and I thank you for your attention.
Great. Thank you. Simone Boswell, and then Ikbal Sarang and Jeffrey Jones, and again, if you can come closer, that helps.
Good evening, council. Thank you very much for giving us tonight a few minutes of your time, and apologies in that we are coming to you a little bit late and have just been informed that this may come up at a later council meeting, so apologies for hogging up the public format, but we weren't sure if we were going to get the chance or not. Again, my name is Simone Boswell. I live in the President. I've lived in the President for eight years. I'm an entrepreneur. I co-founded a company that's based in Palo Alto, and honestly, we're just here tonight to let you get to know us, but we're also here to ask you very clearly that we are requesting to be part of the process. We all got a note underneath our door last week that basically said we had to get out with a certain amount of time, with no discussion, no anything, and we're here to respectfully ask for transparency from the council and from the city management through this process, and that this group will act for us, the residents and constituents of Palo Alto. Thank you very much.
I probably didn't do justice by your name.
That was fine. That was fine. Thank you. My name is Ikbal Sarang. I've lived in this building for almost 30 years. This place is my home. I've raised my daughter here. It is a compact-sized studio apartment at market rates and affordable prices, probably because of its antiquated infrastructure and no parking. The average unit is anywhere from 250 to 500 square feet, with one, with five one-bedrooms, which go up to 650 square feet. We have a 64-unit luxury hotel adjacent to us. The new owners are proposing destroying the existing residential The new owners are proposing destroying the existing residential and putting up boutique hotel. Is that fair? Is that what's needed? Recently, in fact, I believe just last month, passed an ordinance, number 5438, Affordable Housing Combining District Regulations, that clarified the need for housing units in downtown accessible to mass transit. We feel this law actually may apply precisely to our conditions, being that we are fully rental community with market rents and workforce housing at an affordable price in the downtown transit district, utilizing most of the specific amenities offered for future projects, and therefore, would it apply to our situation as an existing residential building to retain that? Thank you. I'll pass.
Thank you. Jeffrey Jones, Tucker Berkman, and then Tatja Prias.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and esteemed members of the Palo Alto City Council, and of course, the City Manager. I want to thank you all for this opportunity to speak before you. My comments are focused on the Hotel President. My name is Jeffrey Jones. I've lived in Palo Alto for nine years. I've lived in the President for nine years. I moved here after twenty-five years in the New York, New Jersey area because I wanted to be in a place where things work, where the city's clean, where the city is safe and inclusive, where people are friendly and civil to one another, where things work because we all follow the rules and regulations. Not just the general rules of civility and politeness, but even more importantly, the rule of law. As a guy who grew up in the Midwest or Southwest, I grew up in Oklahoma City, I'm a plain-spoken guy. I follow the rules, and I expect that others will as well. Following the rules, especially the rule of law, is important to me. In fact, that's what we all do. It's what makes Palo Alto work so well. Thinking about the Hotel President, full disclosure, I live in the building. It is a historic building. It is a historic property. It is a historic downtown property. My ask of the City Council and City Management is simple: Don't rush through the process of remaking the President. Take the time to investigate hand-in-hand with all vested parties in a transparent way what regulations, what rules, what laws apply to this historic downtown building. Just scratching the surface, several basic questions come to mind. If the ground floor is retail, what are the rules for the number of residential floors? Are there FAR restrictions, floor-area ratio restrictions? What are the laws and regulations that apply to this building, being the historic building that it is? I ask that the honorable members of the City Council and City Management do the due diligence appropriate for a project of this size and nature, and to do so in a transparent way. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Tucker Berkman.
Thank you very much for taking the time to hear us today. My name is Tucker. I'm originally from Michigan, and I've lived in the President Hotel for five years. The result of this eviction is, in all likelihood, that the residents of this building will leave Palo Alto, and I don't think that's an outcome that anyone wants. The rents are too high here for people to find a commensurate unit elsewhere in the city. Now, that may sound like a market correction, but these rents are not artificially low. These people have lived in the building for decades, not unlike homeowners who couldn't afford to buy their own home or move to another home where the tax would be reassessed. The city has the duty to keep people here who want to stay. We would like to stay in Palo Alto. I moved here because I liked Palo Alto, because this was my favorite city on the peninsula. And we have priority over a new business because we've been living here as community contributors for a long time. Now, I'm sure this incoming business is also going to be a contributor, and I support this business, and I support progress, but that should not come at the expense of the people who are currently living here, who have already proved themselves as citizens of this community. So I would like to call on the city to wait to make any commitments to this business until there's a plan in place for these residents to be accommodated. And I'm also asking for transparency in all dealings with this incoming business so that we, as residents, have a seat at the negotiating table. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is it Katja Prias, followed by Anne Boxel and Chris Kellogg?
Yeah, my name is Katja Prias, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. I moved here from Germany in nineteen ninety-five. I'm a single mother of a daughter who grew up in the Hotel President apartment and in its neighborhoods. I'm also the owner and director of Language Arts, a private language school in downtown Palo Alto, catering to all age and social groups of the community for the past twenty years. Currently, we have about sixty students enrolled. Language Arts has been named an asset to Palo Alto by many residents because of its contribution to a diverse and vibrant community Palo Alto used to house. But things have been changing over the last years with office rents skyrocketing, small and local businesses closing or leaving Palo Alto, impacting Language Arts as well. Living in the Hotel President apartment allowed me, though, to continue my program in a modified approach. Now, with the potential loss of the apartment, I'm facing the threat of losing my home and the ability to teach from there. And once again, I'm seriously wondering how any city supports the change of a vibrant, diverse community where small local businesses used to thrive next to incoming startups to a city relying on a monoculture based on who has the most money to offer. The sale of the Hotel President to mega developer with the consequence of the loss of seventy-five apartment units, its diverse community and small businesses falls into the same category. When talking to an ex-city official last night, wondering why City Council never reached out to us, residents of the Hotel President, before the sale was final, the answer was that the sale was a private deal and City Council basically had nothing to do with it. But then the question, why did City Council have meetings with AJ Capital before the sale was completed? How come...
Just finish. You can finish your thought.
How come the Council gave priority to talk to AJ Capital, a company foreign to Palo Alto, and not to the citizens who elected them? In my opinion, the next steps in the process need to be slowed down seriously to give enough time to look at the complex nature of the situation so that a decision can be made that does not benefit only one party.
Thank you. Diane Boxel, Chris Kellogg, Kevin Golding.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Councilmembers. My name is Diane Boxel, and I grew up to grad students' parents on Stanford campus and went to school in Palo Alto, Gunn, Termon, Castilea, before heading to Stanford to study. I became a teacher, so I'm not a wealthy Palo Alton. However, I've contributed to the cultural wealth of this community by teaching children piano lessons for the past thirty years. This process of the sale of the President seems rushed. The new owners have made meetings available to us with their consultants, the last of which are scheduled for tomorrow. This gives us little time to digest, process, and respond to what has transpired. We are not even sure to whom we should be paying our rent next month, and if notices we received are legal. We are told that the city has been advised that there are legal obstacles that may be in the way of this deal happening, yet we are being given a timeline for eviction before any of this has been clarified. We need the City Council's help now. We are part of the forty-four percent who rent in this town, and we are about to be displaced. This is not just. There is no way that people like me, who are not anticipating an impending move with two pianos and the accumulations of thirty years of living, can move out and reestablish ourselves in downtown Palo Alto with the three thousand dollars being offered. We want to know what the city has done on our behalf or plans to do. We, the tenants of the President, would like to have as many conversations with you as the new owners have had. How do you intend to advocate for us? Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Kevin Golding, and then Clay Shepherd.
Thank you for your time this evening, council. My name is Chris Kellogg, and I've lived at the President Hotel for seven years. I've lived in Palo Alto for seven years. It's been my only home since I've been here. It's been the most wonderful community I've ever been a part of. I am here to stand with my fellow residents and neighbors and ask for transparency in the process, and also ask that you think of what type of community you would like to see. Would you like to see a community where local businesses are able to thrive and prosper, or a community that is sold to the highest bidder? Thank you for your time.
Clay?
Hi, I'm Kevin Golding.
Sorry, thank you.
So I am a relatively new resident, Honorable Mayor and council members. Thank you for your time. I'm a relatively new resident of the President Hotel. I've been there for two years, but from the very beginning, it felt like home. It's a very unique environment with some really warm and wonderful people that are here tonight. So I'm really disappointed to hear about the pending eviction, and I'm mostly concerned about what it's going to do to my neighbors, particularly the ones that have lived in the building for so very long. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Now Clay Shepherd, and then Alex Smiley.
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 Good evening. I'm Clay Shepherd, a Stanford graduate and self-employed technology consultant living in Unit 304 of the President Hotel. This is my tenth year living at the unit, and I currently live with my son, who works two jobs on University Avenue. Living in this complex is our livelihood, and we cannot comprehend why we're suddenly being uprooted and forced to relocate. It's disruptive to our lives and will create a significant financial hardship. Moreover, with an upscale hotel already located adjacent to the property, we cannot understand why a boutique hotel catering to temporary visitors and tourists would be needed or valued. Us residents of the President Hotel Apartments feel we deserve help in preserving our homes and this unique and diverse residential community, and request protection from outside forces looking to maximize profits from this property. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alex, whose name I didn't quite say correctly, and then Mary Riordan and Jeff Brown.
Hi, thank you for your time. Alex Smiley, I'm also speaking here as somebody affected by the sale of the President. I moved to Palo Alto five years ago for work from the East Coast, and very specifically to the Hotel President Apartments. I moved here because of, because living here is basically everything and value about small-town life. I don't own a car. I work right here downtown for a tech company. I walk to work. I patronize local businesses. I shop at local stores. I eat at local restaurants. It is very difficult to imagine that I or any other residents will be able to find similar housing somewhere in the area, anywhere, given the timeframe of what the new landlord is proposing. So what realistically is going to happen is that all of us will just move away. Like, I have options. I can go somewhere else. I will buy a car. I will drive to work. I will take out parking space, look into media traffic. I will spend less time here. I will shop here less because I just won't have the time. And my employer will give me other options, too. My company can relocate me somewhere else to any of the major cities, because realistically, if this becomes just yet another town for me to live in, then why am I here? This is a friendly, welcoming, diverse community. We have humanitarian workers in the building. We have creative types. We have a variety of people. It's welcoming and friendly, and I struggle to imagine finding something similar anywhere else in Palo Alto. So I call upon the council to review the sale and, in a transparent manner, essentially just, sorry, I'm becoming quite emotional, just review the sale and involve the community members in planning whatever comes forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Riordan, and then Jeff Brown.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members, neighbors, and friends. Thanks you for the time. I've lived in the Presidente for fourteen years. I've been a teacher here in Palo Alto for the past ten years. I moved in when I was in grad school at Stanford. A friend recommended it, with the caveat, "Don't live on the backside because the dumpsters. They come every seven-thirty for the dumpsters." My first teaching job was in Livermore, and my colleague said, "What are you doing? Why don't you move out here? That commute's crazy." And I said, "You know, Palo Alto's my home. This is where I live." And on the weekends, I'd park the car, and I didn't need to drive. I had restaurants. I had grocery stores I could go to, and I didn't want to leave. This is where my friends are. It's a building. Everybody's talked to the community. It's a community in the building where, when you see the elevator full of furniture, you don't go, "Oh, frick, a frack, somebody's moving." You think, okay, you know, "Oh, you need help getting that couch into your apartment. Let me come help you." That's the kind of building it is. It's a building where, as part of the community, you know, I go to Pete's. I'm at the Prolific Oven. They're making a special drink for me. At Jing Jing, they're getting me soup because I have a cold. On the street, when I see people looking around, looking at their phones, I stop and say, "What are you looking for? How can I help you?" I occasionally forget to move my car, and I get a parking ticket. So I'm paying you money. When there's families there with children, I don't cross against the light, because that's what a good resident does. You know, I'm there to help people who are here visiting, and I would hope that that's the kind of people you want in this community. And that's the kind of people we are. We've been in this town for a long time. We love Palo Alto. And I've looked at prices since I got the notification last week, and there's nothing within my price range. And so I would have to leave Palo Alto, and I think that would be a huge loss for me, but I believe that that would be a loss for Palo Alto as well. Thanks.
Thank you. And Jeff Brown, and then Mary Jane Marcus, and then Palo Alto forward.
Jeff Brown, 660 Lincoln Avenue, Mayor, council members. I'm a little astounded. I compliment you all. You have incredible poker faces, because if I were sitting where you're sitting, I think, listening to these people and considering this issue, steam would be coming out of my ears. This runs absolutely counter. I've been in this city for thirty-four years. This runs absolutely counter to everything over those thirty-four years I have heard this city proclaim it wants for itself. More affordable housing, housing closer to transit, and essential services and shopping, more community, everything, less traffic. It's right there. You don't have to build it. It's there. Now, I suppose there's nothing you can do to dictate who buys this property, but I don't necessarily accept the City Manager's notion that there's nothing you can do to dictate what uses can be allowed to go on in that building. I wouldn't be surprised, let me put it this way, if you don't do everything, and I've got to say, if you people were aware of this sale going on, this prospective sale, and what the use was going to be for the building, I am really disappointed that the community wasn't allowed to know about it. I am really disappointed. And you can hide behind a contract. You can hide behind a process, but no, this is something that affects the community directly. It affects all of us. You can't have a hotel there, and so I would suggest, if you want to do something about it, that maybe you could look at an emergency moratorium in terms of what uses can be allowed for that building, and maybe the buyer would have second thoughts. I don't know. I mean, I know it's a big deal, so I doubt it, but as far as the buyer buying it or not. But to put a hotel on that spot is, to me, the height of irresponsibility for this community, especially in light of what it has always said it wants for itself.
Thanks, Jeff. Mary Jane Marcus, Palo Alto forward, and then Steve Levy.
So, actually, I came to speak on something else, but I just want to express my solidarity with everyone at the apartments. It's very moving to hear them, and we're all affected if they're displaced, because the fabric of our community is coming apart. And I think this is really going to be kind of a test of City Council, of how you respond to this, and also how you respond to renters, because they just haven't been supported in Palo Alto, and I hope you do a lot more for renters, including at the hotels. So I'm just here to request that you have a hearing that you had promised three and a half years ago, the College Terrace Center. The agreement with the planned community was to have the market, which I disagree with, but I predicted then that it would fail, and after six months, starting, I think, early July, it's supposed to be two thousand a day, the fine is imposed. And I had requested that the fine be used for community benefit, because the whole purpose of the market is to have a community hub. College Terrace has lost our community hub, so I'm asking that you... So, I'm asking that you -- you had said you couldn't agree to it being for community use, the fine, but that you would hold a hearing at that time when the fine came about. So, the fine's about to come about. So, I'm asking that you hold a hearing for us to discuss how the fine is used and how we can have it as a bridge for the community to come together. And I would also love to see the space reverted to community use if they find that they don't think a grocer is tenable. Because the whole point is, we don't have -- College Terrace has no community hub now anymore, so we really need that. So, that's my request for the hearing soon. Okay, thanks.
Okay, thanks, Mary Jane. Palo Alto Forward, Steve Levy, Megan Khan.
Respected mayor, vice mayor, council members. My name is Deon Moran, a resident of Palo Alto of over 30 years, and I'm a close friend of several residents of the President Hotel. I'm a board member of Palo Alto Forward and would like to speak for myself and also read a short statement from Palo Alto Forward. Speaking for myself, you've heard some of this, which is, I've been here 30 years and I've known people who've lived in that place for 25 years, at least, or over 50 years. We go to see a movie like, or we have seen Mr. Rogers' Neighborhood. Urban buildings, 10, you know, 10 floors high, that can be a version of that neighborhood. I have seen birthday parties for little children in there. I've heard people, seen people help each other. And my anxiety is that, on the one hand, you have to balance the beauty of garages, ADUs, what a house or parking will look like, but you also have to look at what renters have in this city. And that's a good example. So, on behalf of Palo Alto Forward, Palo Alto Forward bemoans the potential loss of the President Hotel as a residence for 75 of our fellow Palo Altons and strongly supports any efforts to allow for the building to continue to be residential. The President Hotel is a perfect example of the sort of residential building that we need more of in Palo Alto. Lovely building, smaller apartments, relatively affordable. It is located in the center of University Avenue downtown, allowing residents the freedom to shop, eat, live, and work without having to rely on cars. We hope the city council can find a way to preserve this as a residential building. Furthermore, for those people who are supportive of this as a wonderful residential building, please take a moment to think about what a building like this is possible, what makes it possible. The President Hotel violates all of our existing zoning codes. It is underparked, overly dense, and too tall. And yet, it is wonderful. It provides a unique supply of smaller apartments in the heart of downtown and houses a huge diversity of people who may not otherwise be able to live in our community. We want to encourage more President Hotels in our town. Please consider supporting buildings like this in your housing work plan. Sincerely, Palo Alto Forward.
Thank you. Steve Levy, Megan Khan, or something close, Winter Dellenbach, and the last one is Kelsey Baines. Good evening.
Well, I think we've all learned that the building for housing and the residents who live in the building are a treasure to us as a community. So, I have two specific suggestions. One, we have a housing work plan coming up, so please tell Jonathan and Jean Heisberg that you want to hear how we can have more buildings like the President Hotel and examine the height and examine the FAR and examine all those factors that make it affordable. We should at least explore that in a true housing work plan. Second, on the online, I proposed a housing bond after having seen Emeryville, a city far less affluent than us, put up $500 per million dollars of assessed value to raise $50 million. If we did that, we would raise $500 million. We would have serious money that we as residents and the business property owners put in so that if this comes up again, we would have money to buy the hotel and preserve it without getting into a bunch of legal stuff. Not this year for the bond, maybe 2019. Oakland did it. Alameda County did it. San Francisco did it. Our county did it. I think if Emeryville can do it for their residents, we should give it a try for the people who live in the hotel and the ones to come. And thank you, Liz and Valerie, for standing up for the LGBT community. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan, not last name. Thanks.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Megan Khan and I live in Professoreville. I'm also here speaking in solidarity with the residents of the Hotel President. I think that anything that the city council can do to keep these residents within the city of Palo Alto, I would urge that they do that. And I would also like to say that, as other people have mentioned, the building does not fit with current zoning and codes. And I would hope that the city council would consider building more high-density buildings such as the Hotel President to allow middle-income families to stay in the city of Palo Alto. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking. Winter Dellenbach, and then Kelsey Baines.
Well, the one optimistic thing I heard tonight was Jim Keane said that he -- staff is reviewing factors in play. I was a little cranky last week when I heard "by right" and that the city couldn't do anything because that included people being so under threat of displacement. I understood what you were saying, but I like -- I'm going to read, madly read between the lines when you say you all are reviewing factors in play. And I'm going to piggyback that on to my understanding that earlier this week, Councilman Tom DeBois showed some real leadership in working with somebody else in the community and coming across some information that was then relayed to staff and that staff is taking a good, hard look at that right now. And that may offer some -- a chance to take some ease from the situation in a positive way down the line. I am hoping that, given the situation that's going on right now over at the hotel, that it pains me a little bit to hear that there may not be anything going on over the break with that information. Because I don't know if you know that, starting last week, and it's my understanding, this week, all the residents are being told that they are assigned a particular date, that they're supposed to sit down with a representative of the buyer and discuss their situation and vacating the hotel. So, that whole process is going on. And so, while you all are on a six-week break and going on vacations, they're all over there supposedly supposed to discuss getting out of the hotel. So, they may not have filed an application with the city. I understand that situation. But that whole process for them is going on, and that's a real shame. And this isn't about, "Oh, let's go build some tall buildings somewhere." That doesn't help them with displacement. Would everybody in the audience, no matter whether they live there or not, that supports the workforce housing that actually is affordable there and keeping these people in their housing, please stand up. Everybody stand up that supports them saving the workforce housing, affordable housing. Stand up. Stand up. We want you guys to work with these folks and save that housing thing.
Thanks, Winter. Kelly, Kelsey.
Yes. Good evening, honorable city council members. My name is Dr. Kelsey Baines. I am a resident of Downtown North and an employee of VA Palo Alto. At the VA, I work for something called HUD-VASH, which is a partnership between housing and urban development and VA supportive housing. Our goal as an organization is to provide permanent supportive housing to veterans who are homeless and chronically homeless. As a result of the nature of the work that I do, most of my coworkers are social workers. Not one of them lives in Palo Alto. They commute from places like Livermore and Oakland for a job that requires driving as far north as Daly City and as far south as Gilroy. As a result, we are massively understaffed across our mental health departments. And even more concerning is the plight of the veterans that we serve. Few, if any, of them can be housed in the area around the hospital, and many of them have chronic medical needs that require almost daily attention. And as a result, we're housing them in places like South San Jose with very limited access to public transportation. They might need to spend two hours on a bus to get to Palo Alto for their treatment. And so, I've heard all these stories tonight from all these people who are going to be displaced from one of the few lower-income buildings in this city. And I would just hope that the city council is asking themselves, A, how we can avoid displacing these residents who deserve to be a part of this community? And furthermore, why can't a building like the Hotel President be built today? Why can't we have high-density housing near public transit for all people? And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. That was our last card, and we don't respond, as you know, to oral communications. I would simply say to Jeff Brown, I doubt that there's a council member here that wasn't thinking sympathetically of what has happened at the President Hotel. We don't have information yet, any, surprisingly, very little more than you do. And -- but when we have it, I know we're going to share it.
Just add, I know we typically don't, but I want to thank Winter for clarifying what the staff comments were, mine in particular, making it, trying to make it very clear tonight that there are a lot of factors that we are carefully looking at, you know, in the city's code and ordinances as it relates to this. And any, it would be, I don't want to have what I've said misrepresented in a way that actually could be, would not help our ability to look very carefully at what discretion the city has. Thank you.
Karen?
Yeah, I see. Did you have your light on?
Yes, I did. And I appreciate the comments by both the mayor and the city manager. And it is true, we don't respond to speakers in the public on oral communications, but I think a clarification may be helpful, and that is, and I think this is true of, and I won't speak for other people, but I think this is probably true on this dais. There seems to be a perception that council members have been meeting in private and negotiating with the potential owner. And I just want to assure that that hasn't been the case. I know I met with them at their request just four days before they purchased the property. And as a matter of fact, it would be incumbent on us not to negotiate with either the residents or the owner, or when something comes to the council, we'd have to recuse ourselves. So, our avenue is to work with and through staff to see what the possibilities are. And I hope that helps to assure people that there haven't been, like, behind-the-scenes dealings with the property owner, potential property owner in this case.
Thank you, council member, for saying that. I think probably all of us were in the same situation, invited to hear what was happening. And frankly, for me, it was not defined ahead of time, so it was somewhat of a mystery. Councilman McCoo?
I just wanted to ask the city manager, while we're on our break, if anything comes in, will you please make sure that you do let us all know?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Thank you all for being here for oral communications. And that takes us on tonight to our consent calendar. I have two comments on one of the consent items.
Minutes.
Oh, sorry. Forgot the minutes.
Seconds.
Needed to go backwards. Okay. Could you vote on the board for the minutes approval?
Sharp from Philson.
Okay, so, that passes unanimously. Thank you. And now, we will go on to the consent calendar. As you know, we voted on this in one motion unless somebody wants to remove one of the items. I don't see any lights, but I do have two comments.
Speaker.
Yeah. Okay. Why don't we have them speak first? Okay. So, if you would like to speak to this before we vote, Ken Horowitz and Allison Cormac speaking to item number 12 on the consent calendar, which is to approve an agreement with Coverley High School regarding essentially what we would call an RFP. So, Ken, and then Allison Cormac.
Yes, thank you. I felt necessary to comment on this particular item because I've been following the Coverley Community Center master plan for about 10 years, ever since Foothill College wanted to purchase those eight acres. If there was ever an example of insanity, this, I think, is one of those, pursuing an idea that doesn't have any good end to it. I have been to the school board meetings and I've followed their action. They're basically want to use that as a future high school. And whether it's going to be the next 10 years, 20 years, 100 years, 500 years from now, that is their master plan for that site, 28 acres for a third high school. I think what you should do is just cut your losses now and sell the eight acres. And then, whatever asked the Board of Education, they're going to put out a bond, and it's on their agenda for tomorrow, and have them include in their bond for an allocation for eight acres, and let the voters approve of it, and let them buy the eight acres from you. And then, use that money to find a permanent solution for these community organizations. It's just a bad investment for the city to keep that eight acres. And so, I would hope that you would not approve this particular agreement and just tell the school board, "You're going to cut your losses in 2019," and that they should take it over and they should go out for a bond to purchase the eight acres from you, and then you use the more, the money wisely for a permanent solution for our community organizations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Allison Cormac.
And that's one solution I hadn't heard yet as we were talking through Coverley. I've heard the opposite, which is that the city should be buying the land from the school district. I think the reality is, we have to have a collaborative process, and this is the first thing I've seen that is a collaborative process. Section 3 in your report, "Time is of the essence." That is correct. I've been going to city-school liaison meetings, as some of you will attest, for a year and a half on this topic. It's taken a long time to get here. I'm delighted to see that Concordia's plan includes community fellows. I think we all know how important that is to involve the community during the process. And the demand for community services is extraordinarily large, as other evenings have demonstrated in these chambers. Please remember, the lease does require a master plan by the end of next year. I look forward to collaborative process. There could be such an amazing place. And it's just, it's such a shame that it's so dilapidated when the demands are so high. So, I realize that this is a slightly higher price than perhaps people were expecting. But when you look at the sequa part, I think it's certainly reasonable, and I sincerely hope that it remains on the consent calendar as approved tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, seeing -- Councilwoman Matanaka.
No one loving.
You said --
No one I have voted.
Okay, so...
So, I'll move consent. We're looking to move it.
Thank you. Pardon?
Consent item.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. Any objection to that? If not, would you vote on the board? Okay. With that, that takes us to our main option item of the night, action item, which is a public hearing. And I don't know how many of you are here from that. I think we have some other issues that have actually been of greater interest to the community than our budget. But having said that, I'm very much hoping that the budget gets the attention tonight that it deserves. We're talking about spending $210 million, providing you with services for the coming year. And for all of you who are here tonight, this will be your opportunity to speak out. This is the result of...
Greg, I might give the speaker his no vote if he wants.
I'm sorry. Before I go on, do you want to speak on your no vote?
Yeah. So, item 11...
Sorry, Greg. I didn't see you.
Item 11 is giving a pay increase of 5.5%. In our budget, we have a 1.7% increase for the budget. So, this is roughly about, you know, 3x more than what's budgeted. So, if we do this, we're going to be over... So if we do this, we're going to be over budget. So it doesn't make sense to be giving these kind of raises.
Thank you. I thought you were going to speak on the budget, Greg, as I know you're leaving earlier. So regarding the budget, we're going to consider adoption of the ordinance adopting the budget for fiscal year 2019. This item includes the following specific actions. Adoption of the fiscal year 2019 operating and capital projects, including the 2010 City Table of Organization and the updates to the municipal fee schedule. The acceptance of the June 30, 2017 actuarial valuation of Palo Alto's retiree healthcare plan, and approval of full funding of the annual actuarially determined contribution for fiscal years 2019 and 2020. The adoption of the amended salary schedules for the management and professional group, and the Service Employees International Union, SEIU, hourly. And finally, council may provide additional direction to the staff on finance committee requested referrals for additional staff work. Council and the public are reminded that last week, the council approved a number of items related to utility rates and financial plans, specifically the electric financial plan and rate adjustments, gas utility financial plan and corresponding rate adjustments, fiscal year 2019 wastewater collection financial plan and corresponding rate adjustments, and the water utility financial plan and corresponding rate adjustments for 2019, storm drain rate changes, and dark fiber rate changes. So, does staff have a presentation on tonight's action to adopt the budget?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do.
Thank you.
And we're so excited to present this, this budget to you. It is the very last proposed budget that I will have after 38 years, and I believe it's also our chief financial officer, Lalo Perez's, last budget.
We'll send you guys both a copy next year.
That being said, please don't drag it out really long tonight, you know?
But not Kylie's.
Pardon me? Oh, no, no. And that's why we're going to let Kylie carry the majority of the, of the presentation here tonight. I'll jump in if it's necessary and help with the wrap-up. And I just would want to say one other thing that may, will come up later. Out of all of the sort of standing committee work that the council, and the council committee system follows, it really is the work that the finance committee does on the annual budget, the review that is sort of the most intense and the kind of deepest dive. We did some concentrated sessions this year that I think were actually particularly effective. But again, I just want to say, City Manager, I always appreciate the work that takes place in finance. And in particular, there were some creative and assertive recommendations that the finance committee made in response to the proposed budget, all of which were certainly, in my view, clearly in the best long-term interests of the city. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. And turn it over to Lalo and Kylie. Kylie.
Thank you, Jim. Good evening, council. I'm Kylie. I'm the budget director. And we're going to go through, try and go through a high level of the entire budget for FY19. As a reminder to the council, we went over a high-level overview, and we transmitted this budget on April 30. And as Jim had mentioned, went through three full days of intensive conversation with our finance committee, really looking and scrutinizing every department and every project. Wrong keyboard. As a brief overview, what we'll do is we'll start tonight in the operating budget through all the different types of funds. We'll go then into the capital budget. And as Jim mentioned, we'll go through a summary where we'll hopefully have some comments from the finance committee chair as well. At a high level, before you this evening, is a citywide budget that has $711 million in revenue. The largest category continues to be net sales. Overall, this is almost a 5% increase from the FY18 budget. It's about $27 million from the FY17 budget, with the largest increase actually being in net sales of about 5% or $14 million. On the expense side, you can see we have a balanced budget of $711 million of citywide expenses. This chart will change once we look at the general fund, but for right now, you can see the largest components of the city's annual expenses continue to be salaries and benefits, utility purchases, and capital improvements. Overall, our expenses are up 5.8%, or about $38.9 million from the FY19 budget, I'm sorry, the FY18 budget. This is, again, driven by capital improvement. So our capital improvement investment is up almost $50 million from our FY18 budgeted Staffing. Citywide full-time staffing actually is on a decline year-over-year. As you can see in the general fund, there is a reduction, 11 positions that the council already approved for the fire department. And then this budget recommends an additional 6.6 reductions and a reallocation. So ultimately, you are seeing a reduction of 17.6 positions in the general fund. That's a 1.2% reduction in your general fund full-time headcount. To note in here, actually, is that your general fund staffing levels are about 10% below your peaks in 2008, 2009. So we still haven't returned to the same staffing level as prior to the most recent downturn. Kind of illustrating that is the kind of just side-by-side look at your full-time equivalents in 2008 versus your full-time equivalents in 2019. You can see the juxtaposition of that against your growing population as a community. Our services continue to increase as we've gone through this decade, and we have almost 30 FTE that are still not restored. So doing less with more, so to speak, as well as changing our service deliveries, we talked about at the finance committee. Overall, the next slide is looking at the salary and benefit trends in the general fund and all funds when we look year-over-year. So the first section of this is looking at the general fund specifically. So you'll notice that there is no increase in salary and benefit costs from the FY18 adopted budget. We actually have a $218,000 reduction. That's because included in this budget are reductions in staffing, as I mentioned before, in order to structurally balance the general fund. In all funds, you continue to see that muted growth, with only about 1.3% increase in salaries and benefits, 0.6% overall. To call out a couple of the declines in here that we'll go over in a moment, retiree health is down due to a favorable report from our actuary, as well as other benefits as we align funding needs. So let's go over our internal service funds first. As a reminder, internal service funds are funds that are funding services that are used within the city. Those are by city departments. So that would mean our fleet, our technology investments, our benefits. So these are all services that are provided by departments within the city to other city departments to ensure services can be rendered to the community at large. Of particular note on this slide is that retiree healthcare fund. This is our OPEB, or retiree medical fund. Overall, you can see a reduction in the expenses from year-over-year. That's due to a biannual actuarial review of our liabilities and assets. For our retiree medical plan, we have a, actually, favorable report because we do also have a trust fund that has over $100 million in it due to some pretty smart decisions by some CFOs in prior years. So overall, I want to say it's about a $1 million decrease year-over-year, and we also realign the funding liability between general fund and enterprise funds based on our staffing, our staffing levels. In workers' comp fund, you can also see a significant decline as we align funding with the needs. So what we do in this fund on an annual basis is look at our claims, our liability outstanding on our claims, and the funding within the report. We do this with an outside consultant, and then we align the charges to departments accordingly to ensure that we're not overfunding or underfunding our workers' comp program. So let's go into our general fund, taking us all the way back to our long-range financial forecast that the council approved back in January of this year. We discussed having a $2.6 million gap in FY19. That's the blue line, the net one-time surplus, and that if we did nothing, that that gap would continue until 2024.
That's the blue.
That's the blue line. Okay? We also discussed if we structurally fixed that gap, meaning if in FY19, we made structural changes to either revenues and expenses, to bring revenues and expenses in line with each other, that we would be bouncing along zero, basically. We would have, we wouldn't have a surplus, we wouldn't have a deficit. And that's the red line. And that's that arrow that you can see. In FY19, you see the negative 2.6. If we cure it in FY2020, it would be solved.
Kylie, just a quick clarification, because we have lots of people in the audience tonight.
We do.
Would you talk about structural deficit versus other deficits?
Absolutely. So structural means that it's ongoing. It's not going to be a one-time fix, like we're draining a reserve for one year. It would mean that we are either increasing revenues or decreasing expenses year-over-year over year. So if we did, if, let's say, we reduced $1 million of expenses in FY19, we would continue that reduction of expenses through 2020, 2021, 2022. So it's not, we wouldn't add it back the next year. It will forever be reduced.
And if I could just add then, so what this chart says with this little arrow pointing to 2020, is that the proposed FY19 budget balances the budget with all structural ongoing savings so that in 2020, essentially, the proposed budget, or the predicted budget at this point in time, would be, again, at this level, as opposed to if we had taken money out of a capital project one time and spent it, we would have been back in this predicament next year, but we fix it in an ongoing way.
And to illustrate Jim's point, this next chart, the green line, is what's before you tonight as a council. The green line shows that in FY19, we have a balanced budget, and it's structurally or ongoing balanced, as Jim and the mayor alluded to, meaning in FY19, 2020, 2021, we have cured that gap between revenues and expenses. Now, just a cautionary note, as a council and as a finance committee, we have talked about what's not included in these projections. There are a number of known unknowns. For example, we're currently in labor negotiations with some of our labor groups. We have growing infrastructure costs that we've discussed. As contracts come up to bid, if we're rebidding something like a citywide service, an example that we did in the most recent year is janitorial services, we don't know what those bids are. So we haven't factored those kind of known unknowns yet. But our best guess right now is that we have our, our financials in order from a long-term So, general fund revenues are $214.5 million. You can see the black highlighting, almost a little over 50% of the chart here, those are the tax revenues. So these are general taxes that come into the city to pay for general services. About 60% of our revenues are from taxes, 58.3% for those who want to be exact. Overall, our revenues are up 3.6% from prior-year levels. That's about $7.5 million in the general fund. Over 80% of that increase is due to increases in these taxes. And if we look at these taxes in comparison to our expenses, these taxes pay for basically our three largest departments, police, fire, and community services department. So if we wanted to look at the equivalent of those department costs, you'd add up basically the blue, red, and green slices of this pie, and that would cover the costs for those three departments.
Madam Mayor, if I could just expand on that just for a second. This, you know, the variety of investments and other approaches that we have in our city's general fund really puts us in a comparatively favorable position in comparison to a lot of other cities, in that only 60% of our budget is, it comes directly from taxes that our residents or businesses would pay. And so I think this is really helpful for you all, when you, when you hear from a citizen to say, well, what do my taxes go for? You say, well, I'll tell you what they go for. They fund our public safety departments, police and fire, and they effectively fund our community services department and those programs. Now, to the extent that you don't like what we're doing in those areas, then when we think about, should there be less taxes or whatever, that's really sort of the value that we're getting. The dollar amounts of those three departments, again, as Kylie said, police, the largest expenditure, close to $42 million, fire, $30-some million, and community services, $28, $29 million. Sales tax, property tax, transient occupancy, and utility users' tax, I mean, most of that goes to fund those three program areas. Thanks.
That's a good clarification, I think, and I said the, the sales tax locally funds the fire department. Pretty straightforward.
The next slides we'll go through are pretty high-level, but a little bit more detail, I guess, about the taxes themselves. So we've had a lot of discussion over property taxes and where they come from. The chart before you outlines the average residential bill, the average commercial bill for property tax, as well as the median within Palo Alto. What's interesting here, and important for us to remember, is the city only gets about 8% of someone's property tax bill. So let's say, on average, the individual property generates about a $14,000 annual property tax bill. The city's only receiving $1,145 of that. Now, that $1,145, to what the mayor and Jim alluded to, goes into that property tax pie that we saw on the previous slide. And so those are the funds that go towards our general services, like public safety, like community service, and like libraries. And so you can kind of just see the difference of our averages versus our median. Obviously, we have some properties that are still under Prop 13 rules, and so that dampens our growth. And I think Jim, in prior conversations, alluded to, you know, we have a number of properties that are valued under $600,000, where we know the assessed value, if it was on the market today, would be much higher than that.
Kylie, could, with the indulgence of staff, could we hear a few words from Councilwoman Tanaka, who is trying to get on a plane to go east tonight, and he's asked if he could have a few minutes before he goes? Does that meet with your approval?
Well, I mean, the alternative is you miss your plane flight, right? For one thing, yeah.
Go ahead, Greg.
Yeah, so this is a topic, as a lot of you know, I feel very passionate about. And unfortunately, even though it's scheduled to finish at 8:30, it didn't start till about 8 o'clock, unfortunately. So I just want to say a few words now, generally, about some of my thoughts, because I have to leave in about 10 minutes. So I think the good is that, I think, this is the first time, I think, Palo Alto has actually acknowledged the pension, unfunded pension liabilities. That's actually a big step forward. We're making a small step towards actually addressing this issue with the $4 million cut. Hopefully, that actually happens, but that's, that's the good. But there's still a lot of challenges. One of the big challenges is on the CIP. You know, as you guys know, we, the council voted to move forward on the TOT. The CIP can actually be balanced, as staff will talk about, with the current projections. Of course, makes some assumptions about the Marriott Hotel, but I think this gives the city incentive to actually make sure that project finishes on time. And so I think, I think for us, staying with our means is actually really critically important, to stick with the budget versus trying to go out to the taxpayers again and again for more and more tax increases. Because I think, for us, this should be the last resort. We're entrusted by our constituents to spend money wisely. And I think, in many cases, this has, we need more work in this area. For instance, if we look at the average compensation for the average, this is the average city employee, it's now $205,000 a year in terms of total compensation. This is a lot of money. This is probably more than a lot of people here in the audience make. Now, this, of course, includes the fact that city employees get pensions, and most of us here in the private sector do not. But still, I challenge you to find another city with the average. This is the average compensation at $205,000 a year. This is extraordinary, even for Palo Alto. The average household. The average household in Palo Alto is well below $150,000, I think it's $140,000, $130,000, and they don't get pensions. So I think, I think getting a handle on this is actually critically important. You know, we have a, the budget here is showing, in the general fund, an increase of about 1.7%, and we just, the council just approved a salary increase of 5.5%. So how does this compute? How does, how do we stay in a certain budget when we are approving increases way beyond what the fund, what the actual fund's average increase is? So I think, I think that's really, really challenging, and I think that's, it's hard, though, right? Because we want to treat our employees well, they're servicing the city well, so I think it's important to treat them well. But at the same time, we also need to take care of our constituents. That's also really important. So staying with our means, staying within budget, is actually critically important, and that's something that we have a hard time doing. The other big challenge that we have is, it's hard for us to know what's really going well, what's not going well. And the big issue is the limited benchmarking metrics that we do. We don't really compare ourselves against other cities. So even though just that every city provides fire service, provides police service, provides, you know, trash service, provides all these other services that people expect and pay for, we don't benchmark ourselves on this. We don't actually know how well we do in terms of delivering this and the value for the dollar. And I think, I think this is something that we could do much, much better in terms of improving, improving our efficiency, to know, like, is our dollar really going as far as it should? Because, again, going to the trough every time we have expense increases is not acceptable. And so I think it's important for us, while this budget may, will probably pass, even though there are a lot of challenges, this is, this is something we need to do for future budgets. We need to really make sure that we understand what is good, what is bad. Because what we do right now, simply, is we just look at historicals. We just see what we did last year. And it doesn't mean last year was good or bad. It might have been great, it might have been terrible. But we don't know, because we don't know compared to other cities. In order to know whether, whether we're overspending or underspending, is we have to compare. And I know this is difficult, and staff has a lot of difficulties doing this, but this is something that must be done. If we really want to know, is our money being well-spent? This is something we have to do. We have to compare against other cities. We need to benchmark, we need to know what, how far our money is going, and what kind of return investment are we getting. And I think this is, this is critically important for our city. It's not a small budget, $700 million. That's a, that's a huge budget. And yet, I think that there's a lot more things that we could do to, to do much better on this. And then, on the expense control side, I think this is another area that needs a lot of work, and expense control, and also the bidding process. I think it's really critical that we get multiple bids. I know sometimes it's tough in construction markets, but I think it's critically important. We approved a downtown project, which I think went from, I forgot exactly, I'm going to probably miss this, but it went from, like, I think, around $10 million to, I think, $15 or $16 million. And it was a direct award. There was no competitive bidding on this process. I mean, if you guys were going to build a house, you guys would definitely get more than one bid to build a house. But we just, we gave just one award to a contractor without getting competitive bidding. And I think, you know, to make sure that dollars go far, we have to make sure that this kind of stuff doesn't happen. We have to make sure that we have a competitive bidding process that encourages a lot of bids, so we get a good value for our money. And on the expense control side, I think the big challenge here is that, is that, I think, in general, staff finds it easier to pass expenses along to our residents, to our taxpayers, to our constituents, than to actually hold the line. And, you know, I think back to, like, what a family would do with a certain amount of income, how would they spend their money? They have a certain, they make similar money, and they have to spend it within that limit. They don't think that, oh, yeah, we're just, like, suddenly make more money. I think we have, we're entrusted with a certain amount of money to spend, and we should spend that wisely and stay within budget. And so I think there needs to be a better expense control on all different levels. My last point here is really around prioritization. And, and this is hard, right? Because prioritization means we have to make choices. And so, for instance, even on the CIP, which theoretically, if everything goes right, we can pay for without additional tax increases like the TOT. But, you know, we don't actually prioritize. You know, we were sent back to the finance committee for prioritization, but we have yet to prioritize it, despite a lot of meetings on it. And the real reason why is because it's politically very difficult, right? Everyone has their own little thing going on, everyone wants, wants their project to be approved. And so because of that, it's hard for us to prioritize. But I think us as council, we are entrusted by our constituents to actually prioritize, to figure out what are, what are things that are important, what are things that are not important, to figure out what can be streamlined, what can't be. And this is probably the biggest lever we have. I mean, there's other stuff I've talked about, like benchmarking, expansion control, the runaway employee compensation, but prioritization is probably the biggest lever we have, right? Figuring out what's really critically important, what's not, trying to figure out how to make these dollars go as far as possible, and making sure that we gain as much value for our constituents as possible. And ironically, we still have not done any prioritization. We've had members of the public who've come here time and time again, hasn't asked us about prioritization, yet we have still not done this. And until we do this, I just cannot understand how we can go out to taxpayers and ask for more money. Because if we were, if we had limited funds, the very first thing we would do as ourselves individually was we would prioritize, what do we need? Do we need that Ferrari, or do we need to get dinner tonight? Right? And we haven't figured out what is a Ferrari and what is dinner? What is, like, the basics? What are, what are, what are things that are just nice to have? And I think for us on council, it's not something that actually staff can do. So this prioritization issue is not a staff issue, it's actually us on council. It's us on council to figure out what are the things that we really need, what are things that we don't need as much, and where do we put our chips that would actually maximize, maximize the taxes that we collect on behalf of our, of our constituents. So I really wish I could have been more part of this, but I just want to give you my thoughts, and hopefully you guys can carry on and, you know, spend taxpayer dollars well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Greg. Have a good trip, and we'll return to our presentation. We're on page 14, I think that's where we've left off, and we're looking at secured property tax.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the comments, Councilmember Tanaka. As you mentioned, we were looking at secured property tax, but I think we can move on to sales tax.
So, Madam Mayor, I'd like to repeat this over and over and over, just so we're clear. Again, when somebody gets their property tax bill, they may be relatively fortunate, and they've owned their house for a long time, and they know they have a relatively low property tax bill, obviously, in relation to what it costs. Their next-door neighbor might have just bought their house a year or two ago, and they're paying 10, 20 times more. But it's still really important to realize that 8% to 9% of that is the city's share.
And that's all.
Okay? Now, it's not saying that the property tax doesn't go to other good purposes. I mean, the biggest portion by far goes to the Palo Alto Unified School District, and, you know, some lesser amounts to the county, more than we get, in ways. So, again, I think it's much, much more realistic to be thinking about the fact that the city gets about $100 a month from the average property tax owner, from property taxes, to go to fund city services.
And you probably might add to that, Jim, that I'm not sure what the spread is between the lowest property tax in Palo Alto versus what the highest is, but knowing that one house sold for at least $30 million, that would indicate their property tax bill is pretty substantial and might even support one of our departments. So I'm saying that because your point is very good. We have an extraordinary spread between the lowest and the highest of property tax pay.
Yeah, actually, if you look at that chart, the median is, you know, significantly lower even than the average. So it would tell you that the distribution is such that, you know, I mean, 50% of our, of our community pays less, pays $800 a year to the city in property taxes. That obviously means there are some folks on the other side who are paying significantly more.
For those folks, it's a good bargain, believe me. Okay, thanks.
Okay, this next slide is just a snapshot of the economic segments that are generating our sales tax. So as we know, sales and use tax, the council had a study session, I believe, on this back in April with our consultant. This is just a quick snapshot, year over year, of the different segments and what we're seeing trend-wise in them. You can see the lion's share of the city's annual sales tax revenue comes from restaurants, which is holding rather steady. As a, for those who can't actually see the words, because they're very tiny, the gold bars are for the benchmark year of 2016, the fourth quarter of 2016. The blue is the benchmark year of 2017, Q4. So blue is most current, yellow is the prior. And what you'll notice is, on leasing, our leasing is up. This is primarily due to automobile leases. So year over year, we're seeing growth there, but we're also seeing a decline year over year in miscellaneous retail. And we can attribute a lot of this to the shift to the county pool due to online sales. The next slide, the council has seen before, but we thought we would just remind you, this is a convoluted graph, but let's walk through it together. The yellow are the annual room rates, going from 2004 for transient occupancy tax all the way through 2018. So those yellows are the average room rates. The bars are the revenues, or I'm sorry, the green bar is the revenue that's being generated from the tax. The percentages that are towards the bottom of the axes, you know, it says 56.8% on the far left in 2004, those are occupancy rates, and the red lines are where the tax rates changed. So take a moment to just look at it and digest. Now, included in-
Kylie, why don't you run through that once more? That's really important, because later tonight, we're going to look at the TOT, and I think not everyone understands exactly what it is.
Understood. So on the yellow are our room rates. So those are the average room rates in those fiscal years, okay? And those would be the room rates that are being charged, on average, by hotels in the Palo Alto jurisdiction. It would be on those room rates that the TOT rate, whatever it is based on our ordinance, would be charged against. The green line is the revenue that the city has generated on an annual basis from the TOT. The percentages at the very base, they're all in blue except for 2018, are the occupancy percentage. So that means what percentage of the rooms that are available within Palo, within Palo Alto are occupied. So you can see during certain years, the occupancy rate will dip a little bit, and other years, it'll grow, depending on how the economy is doing. And you, the red lines are showing where there were changes in the tax rate. So as you had mentioned, Mayor, this evening, the council will consider increasing the tax rate. Those red lines are years where the council has previously, and the voters have approved, changes in the tax rate. So in January of 2008, the rate was increased from 10% to 12%. In January of 2015, the rate went from 12% to 14%. And now, recall with that last increase in January of 2015, that increase of 2%, as well as the new hotels that were coming online between 2015 and now, those revenues by council policy have been transferred and dedicated to pay for or fund the 2014 council-approved infrastructure plan. So do know, a significant component of these revenues on an annual basis are transferred to the general capital fund to help fund those nine council-priority projects. And, Lalo, did I miss anything? General fund expenses. Moving on, we have a $210.7 million 2019 budget. You'll notice that the percentage split between the different types of expenses are a lot different than that citywide look, and that's because we've normalized for the uniqueness of Palo Alto's utilities. This is, 60% salaries and benefits is very reminiscent of what you will see in other local jurisdictions in their general fund expenses. We are a service-driven organization, meaning our people are our greatest asset, and they're the ones on the front line delivering the services to the community. The finance committee made a recommendation to reduce our general fund expenses by $4 million. That recommendation would allow the city manager to come back during the following six months of this fiscal year, I'm sorry, of this calendar year, to identify where those $4 million in reductions would be. For right now, and for the purposes of displaying this graph, just note that that $4 million reduction has been accounted for in general expenses. So we've understated, so to speak, general expenses, pending a longer discussion with the finance committee and council's direction to do that. Overall, including that $4 million reduction, there's no growth year over year in general fund expenses. As we looked earlier, there's no growth in salaries and benefits. There is some increase in contract services, about $3 million year over year. A large portion of that is due to the janitorial services contract that the council approved last August. Other increases are, transfers are up. As TOT increases, that transfer to the infrastructure also continues to increase. Overall, the city has remained at or above its targeted budget stabilization reserve. What this budget stabilization reserve is, is by council policy in the general fund, we try, we keep 18.5% of general fund expenses in a reserve. Now, there's a range on this reserve. It can go anywhere as low as 15% or as high as 20%, though the target is 18.5. So what this graph is showing you is the green line, which is the target every year, and the red line, which is where the BSR is actually landed on an annual basis. So since 2013, you can see, we continue to be at or above the council-approved target As we discussed earlier, this budget structurally balances both FY19 and FY2020 with expense reductions of $2.3 million across the organization that the city manager recommended. In addition, there's the additional, quote-unquote, $4 million reduction that the finance committee recommended, with the impacts of that still to be determined. There's a net reduction of 17.6 full-time equivalent positions. That's that fire services deployment, as well as a net reduction of 6.6 positions recommended in this budget. Do note, this does not assume any reduction in positions for the auditor's office. The finance committee rolled that back during the budget wrap-up, so the auditor's office staffing is 100% accounted for in these figures. This budget does proactively continue to work towards addressing the city's unfunded pension. As Councilmember Tanaka mentioned, in the transmittal letter of this memo, we discussed alternative, I'm sorry, of this budget, we discussed alternative funding scenarios, and we also continue to increase our contributions to the Section 115 Pension Trust Fund. So this budget recommends an additional $2 million to that, resulting in $7.6 million of principal investments to date. Special revenue funds, quickly, CDBG block grant funds are in there, and will need to be adjusted based on the final allocation that's approved by the federal government. The SB 1 funding that recently passed, although is currently being contested, is assumed in this budget of about $1.2 million on an annual basis. Parking funds, there is a strong focus on parking to scale the programs. And so included in this budget is a continuation of prior services, including the Downtown Valley Service, as well as the annual funding for the Transportation Management Association. It also includes investment in the implementation of a new parking permit system. And the intent of that system is to be a comprehensive platform that will address all of our parking permit fees. And then, lastly, the Stanford University Medical Center Fund. Per the development agreement, we have about $14.7 million being planned to be transferred for capital improvement investments over the planned five-year period. In the enterprise funds, the council took action on these rates last Monday, but just to recap, overall, the residential bill is anticipated to increase 3.9% based on those rates the council already approved. It's about $11 per month that residents will see. Moving on to the capital improvement plan and capital budget. So just to norm us on terms for right now, the capital improvement plan is a five-year plan. That's what you find in the capital budget that's before you. However, the action that the council, or that we, staff is requesting the council to make this evening is to appropriate only the first year of that plan. So only FY19 funds would be appropriated through the actions and the ordinance that's before you this evening. The outer four years of this is a plan and will be reviewed and addressed on an annual basis.
So when you switch, you're going to switch that?
Yep.
If I can restate this, because this-
If I can restate this, because this is, this gets a little complicated, because there's a lot of terms that are almost the same, but they're not quite the same. And this isn't just Palo Alto's way of doing this, it's pretty much the standard approach. We do comparisons with other cities, we would find that other cities basically do capital planning just like this. So, we have a capital improvement plan. That's when we say we have a CIP. And that is, as Kylie said, a five-year plan. It's a planning document. We have a capital budget for the current year, budget year, in this case, it's fiscal year '19. And that capital budget is the first-year portion of the capital plan. The only obligation that the council makes when you adopt the capital budget for the current year, which is what you do, is the only fixed funding obligation you're making is for those projects in the first year that are in that capital budget. The capital improvement plan is a planning document. Obviously, we have projects that are multi-year, and it's anticipated, once we start spending money, that we're going to have to either redirect the project, defund it, or continue to fund it in the future. But the only commitment is made when we do the capital budget. So, CIP means the five-year capital improvement plan. The focus for this year, as every year, when you actually adopt the budget, as Kylie said, is the FY 2019 capital budget itself. So, Kylie will take you through some of these numbers here on the simple little chart we have.
As Jim alluded to, the chart before you is really for illustrative purposes only, but it's trying to walk through the hierarchy and the terms that Jim just described to us. So, overall, we have the five-year capital improvement plan. So, that's that big old binder-
It's in the blue.
It's in the blue on the far left. So, right now, in that five-year plan, there's almost $750 million worth of capital investments that are planned across all funds. These are our enterprise utility funds, electric, gas, fiber, et cetera, as well as our general capital fund as well. For example, underneath that, you can see your general capital fund is a subset, right? So, a number of different funds or funding types make up your entire CIP plan. So, your general capital fund has $331.8 million of investment over the five-year period. So, of the 750 million, 332 million is anticipated to be invested on general capital fund improvements.
So, the general fund kind of capital program, you'll have like 380 million of that 746 is in the enterprise fund. So, those are big, ongoing, more often than not, maintenance CIP projects like the downtown, upgrade downtown project we're doing right now, which you can just imagine, isn't very interesting, isn't, you know, but is expensive and absolutely necessary for the health and safety of the community. That, those are, those are within the larger blue area, but we're mostly focusing on the general fund portion of this right here.
Right. Now, within that general capital fund is the council's 2014 infrastructure plan. So, those are those nine projects that the council approved in 2014, the public safety building, the two parking garages, fire station rebuilds, the bike ped plan. So, within that $331.8 million are those nine projects. Now, overall, as Jim alluded to, the big blue boxes are the five-year plans. These are plans. What the council is, what is before the council tonight is what's in those green boxes. So, of that 750 million, only 221 million of that is recommended to be appropriated for projects to be spent in FY '19. Of that 221 million dollars, only about half, 133 million, is associated with general capital fund activities.
The others would be in the utilities for the most part.
Exactly. Utilities or internal service funds. Of that 133 that's recommended to be appropriated for the general capital fund in FY '19, 89 million of it is to fund the nine council priorities. That's the public safety building, those are the garages, the fire stations, bike ped, et cetera. So, as we go through this PowerPoint, as we go through presentation and kind of discuss the capital budget, this hierarchy is intended to hopefully help norm both the public and council on terms that we're using, as well as the structure within the capital budget, because we're talking about all funds in five years versus isolated years versus plans that the council has approved and adopted as a prioritization.
And one of the things I think that is worth pointing out again is that the 2014 council infrastructure plan of $261 million is the cost estimate for completing all of the projects on that nine-project priority list established by the council four years ago. And they would all be finished within the term of this five-year capital improvement program. So, absolutely by the latest FY 2023. So, what that means is that if the council takes a little bit longer view, you can begin to see that once the, say, for example, the 2014 council infrastructure plan has been completed, the funding streams that the city has been providing to fund those, dedicating to fund those projects, would be freed up in the future to fund new unidentified, unknown projects. And I think, I think it's close to FY 2022 when we complete those projects. So, again, we, for the most part, particularly on the council infrastructure plan, 2014 council infrastructure plan, we identified, and by policy of the council, dedicated ongoing revenues that we received to fund this. And to some degree, we will be able to continue to add some new things. Now, we'll have some debt service on some of these projects, and they'll carry forward, you know, but that's, that's, that's a different number. So, anyway, just keep that in mind. And one last thing I just would say when we see this, I think this discussion on prioritization is a little misapplied. Number one, this, these nine projects in the council's 2014 council infrastructure plan were very specifically a prioritization that was set by the city council in response to recommendations that had come out of the earlier citizens commission, Blue Ribbon Task Force on Infrastructure Planning. And so, in that, in that particular case, those were the priorities really set that said, we want to be sure that we're dedicating funding to be sure that we get those, those projects through. And in general, the whole budgeting process itself is a process of setting priorities. That's what the budget is. It says, out of these different things that we can do, we're going to set them. So, I would say, if there is disagreement, it is a question of reprioritizing, not the fact that we haven't prioritized. Now, in a, I will admit, in a $750 million budget, it's pretty hard to know every aspect of every item and what is being done. And, you know, if everybody could look at everything, some people could say, well, I think we wouldn't, shouldn't do that or this. I would tell you probably 90% of the time, once we had a detailed explanation, most people would say, oh, yeah, it does make sense that that's what we're doing. But, but I do think that it was really important that, particularly on this capital side, there are choices we make, but there is, there really is this effort to stay as disciplined as we possibly can on these projects in response to as much policy direction as we get from the council. Thanks. Back to you.
Thanks, Jim. So, this slide is looking at that 756 million, or 746.9 million dollar capital improvement plan. So, over the five-year period, there's 218 projects. Here, it's organized by fund type. So, as Jim alluded to before, when we were looking through that hierarchy, about 50% of our capital investment is funded by enterprise funds, the remaining 43% by capital project funds, so that's our general capital improvement fund. Included in that red slice, and included in that 218 projects, are those nine council infrastructure plan projects. Overall, the FY '19 capital budget, we discussed that there's 221.1 million that's being requested to be appropriated by the council this evening. And this slide is looking at all the different funds that are included in that 221 million. So, you can see there's a vast array, but the lion's share is the capital improvement fund, which includes that infrastructure plan. Taking a subset even further, what's included in that general capital, general fund capital budget, so of that 221 million, 133 million is being appropriated in that general fund capital budget.
For the, yeah?
Yep. And included in that 133 million dollars of investment for FY '19, 63% are going to buildings and facilities, the next largest shares for traffic and transportation, after that, streets and sidewalks and parks and open space. And so, again, included in this 133 million is the 2012 council infrastructure plan projects. So, these are those nine projects. The FY '19 budget for these nine projects combined is recommended at $88.9 million. So, of that-
Read them all.
Sure. Of the 133 million, 89 million of that is for the nine infrastructure projects. So, going from left to right, there's the pedestrian bike bridge-
101.
-over 101, the bike ped plan, the public safety building, Bixby Park, Charleston and Ostedera Corridor, the downtown parking garage, the Calav parking garage, fire station number three, and fire station number four. And overall, these nine projects are currently estimated to cost 261 million over the life of the project. Just note, the 261 does include some prior year expenses, as well as that $20 million contingency that we've discussed previously. So, in summary, we have some near-term and long-term challenges that we'll be facing as an organization, and this budget does make some incremental steps towards addressing both the near and long-term challenges. Most immediately, the 2014 council infrastructure plan, cost escalations, as you guys, the council hears this evening, a TOT increase, a potential TOT increase. We do have new CIPs that are unfunded in what we just reviewed. So, something to keep in mind within the prioritization is, we have gone through a prioritization process through the budget. However, there remain infrastructure investments that the council and community have articulated a desire for, however, right now are not programmed into either the CIP or the '19 capital budget. Jim, you want to go through the rest of this?
Kirana, keep going.
All right. We have a number of transportation initiatives, obviously, grade separation being a significant one, both near and long-term. We are in open negotiations with a number of our labor groups. And as you noticed in the general fund, with 60% of our expenses, people are important because they are the ones that are delivering our services. So, we also need to make sure that we're retaining and attracting the quality workforce that's needed to deliver these services to the community. We have our unfunded pension liabilities, and we also have our city-owned assets operated by nonprofits. That's things like Avenidas or the Palo Alto History Museum. And then, of course, the potential recession, as everyone always talks about, we have had 10 years of growth as a whole. And so, we're always looking towards that to make sure that we're proactively positioning ourselves. With that, I think Jim will-
Yeah, well, I just want to add, I mean, I think that the, the combined operating and capital budget for the city, you know, in essence reflects kind of a commitment to ongoing values that have been expressed by the council as you listen to the community about what's important for the city to, to focus on. And we also do a much better job than most cities in actually not only managing, identifying, managing, and reporting our budgets, the plans we have for the current year, but identifying issues and doing long-range planning and forecasting about the future. So, even though the budget that you have here, for your consideration, addresses lots of critical issues, begins to make some movement with the finance committee recommendations, potentially on how we address some of these long-term systemic issues like the unfunded pension liability, there are always moving parts. So, again, there are other projects that the council will be interested in, in the future. You've already signaled some things that need to happen with the JMZ, I'm just repeating it. We know pretty well, for the most part, that some sort of capital investment and rebuild of the animal shelter unfunded in a major way right now will be most likely necessary in the city's future if we're going to maintain the animal shelter, you know, in the city. And that is the direction that we have. And so, you know, we're constantly, you know, we're not in a static environment, there are always dynamic, dynamic issues. We have lots of things identified in our master plan for parks, and, you know, the council may be, be hearing from folks about one location or another, how is it that we find the funding for that? I do think that, I do think the council needs to consider these moving parts and these moving future needs, in addition to what we have balanced when you have your next discussion later on about additional revenue sources. I, I just don't see how the city can begin to meet that without the one discussion that you're having, and the fact, when we look at issues like grade separation and that sort of thing, the huge gap in the capital costs of what we're going to have to do to solve that sort of a problem is going to mean that in future years, we're going to have to be planning for and thinking about, how, how could you go to the ballot potentially to raise revenues, to really fund, you know, the, probably what would be the biggest capital project that the city has undertaken maybe ever. So, that being said, we have some recommendations for the, the council. This, this first one begins to reflect the finance committee motion that they, the committee had identified, and I can ultimately leave that to the finance chair to go over in more detail if that's what you need to do. That's on this slide and the next slide. And this, for the most part, is dealing with the specifics of adopting the budget itself. And then, lastly, there are three referrals as part of this action that we're also including as a recommendation for the council's consideration. One, as we've already all talked about here, is the recommendation of the council to reduce the budget by $4 million. We're essentially setting that revenue aside in a reserve, and then coming back to the finance committee, as Kylie mentioned, in the first six months of, the remaining six months of this calendar year, to look at what changes we make. That's going to involve some detailed discussion. That will be, that will be a great exercise in prioritization in and of, right there. Secondly, the finance committee asked that we come back with a more detailed discussion about what we want to do with changes to municipal fees. There are some adjustments that are included within this budget, but I think the committee recognized that there would be an opportunity for a little bit of a deeper dive, and I think that that is something that has to happen this calendar year. And so, I would be suggesting, again, in support of the committee's recommendation, that the, the, other changes to the municipal fee schedule are something that warrant a discussion at the finance committee, and ultimately, a return to the council before the end of this calendar year with any potential adjustments. So, this would be something that you could, you could comfortably say, we're in a position to adopt the, the municipal fee schedule as it exists right now, with the understanding that finance would be revisiting it to some extent for this year. And then, lastly, there was a small concern or project by the finance committee, for us just to come back pretty quickly to discuss some strategy for some of the, how, how we prioritize some of the capital projects in the gas, in the gas fund. So, our recommendation would be for all of those, those factors at the start of your staff report, and with these committee referrals, be the action of the council tonight, and we good?
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, we turn it back to you, and finance- Madam Mayor, we turn it back to you and finance chair and however you want to proceed.
Thank you. Yeah. We're now going to turn to the public hearing portion of this, and speakers will have up to three minutes to address the council on the fiscal year 2019. We have three cards, and we'll start with Sharon Erickson.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Erickson. I'm a resident of Palo Alto. I grew up here, raised my children here, and had the great good fortune from 2001 to 2008 to be your Palo Alto City Auditor. On May 15th, after only a few minutes of discussion, your finance committee voted unanimously to eliminate five of the six positions in the office of the city auditor and outsource all audit work. On May 23rd, the committee rescinded the committee's original direction, but as shown on page three of tonight's staff report, the finance committee voted 3-1 to continue to study this issue. I'm here tonight to ask you, the city council, to decline that recommendation and kill the proposal. Palo Alto voters created Palo Alto's independent office of the city auditor in 1983 to serve as an internal watchdog over city operations. For the last 35 years, the office has provided staff, council members, and the public with independent, objective performance audits of the efficiency and effectiveness of city services. Since 2002, it's produced an annual report detailing performance results for all city programs. Altogether, it's an extraordinary body of audit work, covering everything from libraries to permitting to overtime use. The proposal to outsource all audit work to consultants ignores the value of independent in-house auditors who, unlike consultants, provide continuity of review and oversight. The auditors who would lose their jobs under this proposal have in-depth knowledge of city programs that would not be easily replaced. Outsourcing may sound like a good idea, but the city will likely end up with highly-paid consultants who spend minimal time on-site and gain only a limited understanding of city programs and services. Consulting firms issue reports and leave town. In-house staff develop expertise in city operations and provide ongoing oversight. That is not something we can afford to lose in Palo Alto. This is not the time in the history of our city, or of our country for that matter, to diminish accountability in government. This is exactly the right time to support institutions like Palo Alto's Office of the City Auditor, an office that was created by the voters to ensure honest, open, and efficient city government that works for all of us. Please decline the recommendation from the finance committee to study this outsourcing proposal any further. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Bob Moss, Wayne Martin, and Mark Weiss.
Thank you, Mayor Nish, and council members. First, I completely agree with Sharon Erickson's comments about the importance of an internal city audit off, office. The city auditor over years has identified a number of problems and inefficiencies in city operations and millions of dollars in savings, and there is no justification for outsourcing that position. So I urge you not to reconsider anything except keeping the city auditor fully staffed and the city employees. That's the first point. Second, traffic. As you know, traffic is a serious problem in Palo Alto, and some of the proposals for street modifications have not been adequately studied and evaluated, particularly midtown streets like Ross Road and Lewis and the Charleston and Rostodaro Corridor. So I would urge you not to adopt any major changes to either of those streets or those areas until it's been fully evaluated. For example, if they want to put in bulbouts and medians, before you put those in, put in markings on the street or barriers that are temporary, and see what that does to actual traffic flow before you spend millions of dollars modifying the streets and really having negative impacts on traffic and having spillover traffic on adjacent residential streets. When Rostodaro was narrowed from four lanes to two, traffic on Maybelle went up by more than 30%, and the then-traffic engineer said, oh, that's not a problem, no spillover. Nonsense. Problems occur if you don't do the job right, do it right.
Thank you. Wayne Martin, and then Mark Weiss. I, I probably didn't say Mark's name correctly, but I got close. Greetings.
This year's budget is a little bit larger than in most years, and I managed to, to watch the finance committee for a couple of the three sessions, and it occurred to me that, and from reading the documentation, which is over 1,200 pages, I think, for the two budgets, I'm kind of concerned that the city's financial model is on autopilot. It seems from reading some of the financial projections, it's pretty much geared to a geometric 3% increase with very little input from the council. And so I'd like to at least see the idea that the council needs to be much more involved in the budget process than it has been this year and probably in the last few years. I'd like to ask the council to recognize the fact that this airport has never paid for itself, it's not paying for itself now, and in due time, it will probably be about a $10 million transfer from the general fund to the airport fund. I'd like to ask the council to start, or the city, rather, to start looking at financial modeling at timeframes larger than 10 years. For the last couple of months, I've been doing that, and from year 20 to year, or excuse me, from year 11 to year 30, things get pretty scary, particularly where salaries and pensions are concerned. The long-range financial document that was released in December of 2017 identified a number of areas related to pensions that were intended to provide clarity for the city's residents about the pension debacle that we're facing, not only here in California, or, excuse me, Palo Alto, but all of California. I do hope that whatever documents that the city has in mind, those will come to fruition. This year's budget, I think, had a lot of fluff in it, particularly under the topic of goals and objectives.
Thank you. Mark? Mark, are you still here? There you are.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. I want to thank staff, especially Kylie and Lalo Perez for their hard work on this budget and for their many years of service, in his case. So I work in the arts and I always take a sort of liberal arts approach to policy, and ironically, my standardized tests were 22% higher in math than English, but over the ensuing 30 years, 29.8 years, I've focused on how we communicate. And it's a particular thing about the budget that I'm interested in, because a couple of years ago, a former member of council and a former vice mayor suggested I should support and endorse a, a, a initiative that would increase the TOT, transitory occupancy tax. And so, you know, we do get money for our budget from hotels, but I wasn't here earlier, but a lot of people were speaking kind of indirectly on this topic about, we should never, ever, ever replace apartments with hotels, that's pretty nutty. But, and, but there's a particular work of creativity, it's a movie starring my fellow Dartmouth graduate Buck Henry, or, excuse me, written by Buck Henry, directed by Mike Nichols, the late, great Mike Nichols, and starring in his comedic debut Dustin Hoffman, it's called The Graduate, especially the line, "You're trying to seduce me, aren't you, madam?" Thank you.
So those are all the cards we have tonight from the public, so I am going to close the public hearing. And so now that we are closed, we return to the council for questions, discussion, and motions, and is usually our, our practice, I'm going to turn to the chair of the finance committee to have a discussion and a motion, or vice versa.
Thank you, Mayor Nish, and I first wanted to thank my colleagues on the finance committee, council member Koo, council member Tanaka, and council and vice mayor Phil Seth. And I also want to thank Mayor Nish for gallantly stepping in on many occasions when council member Tanaka could not make it. So I wanted to say a couple things about this year's finance committee. This year's finance committee was very different, frankly, than a lot of other finance committees that we did. In this thing, in this committee, what we did really is, we looked at the budget and we said, we need to take $4 million out of the budget. And the reason we said we need to do that is, we are not fully funding our pensions at about, which is about $8 million a year in terms of not fully funding it on an ongoing basis. And the reason why this was a little radical is that when we look back, we had a similar issue with our infrastructure plan. So in 2010, the council was very concerned about infrastructure. The council noticed that we were not keeping up with our infrastructure, we were not, in fact, catching up with our issues, and we were not doing new projects. So what council said is, what we first of all need to do is, we need to catch up and keep up. And the keep up was, we said to ourselves, look at our, we cannot make our infrastructure worse on an ongoing basis, so therefore, we need to keep up. And that was really what the Ibric first said. And after we keep up, we need to then catch up. And I think our roads are a perfect example of that. We now have the best roads in Santa Clara County, and that came directly out of that notion of we need to, first of all, keep up with our roads, not get further behind, and then we need to catch up to where we should be. And I think we are now there on our roads, we have mission accomplished, we do have the best road in Santa Clara County. And so really, what the finance committee done is, has done is turned its attention towards the issue of the unfunded pension liability. So every year, if we do nothing, our unfunded pension liability gets worth by $8 million, and we borrow that money at a 6% or 7% rate. And so if you compound that over, that $8 million becomes $30 or $40 million, and we do that every year. So the finance committee said, we need to stop that, and we need to figure out how to get that under control. Now, there are three ways we could have done that. We could have told the city manager that these are the programs we want cut. We didn't do that. We didn't make it political, we didn't say, we don't like this, or we're prioritizing that, and we're doing that. We said, we are not really in the best position to do that. Mr. City Manager, you are in the best position. Staff is to look at the budget and say, where would be the least harmful, the cuts that would be the least impactful to the citizens of Palo Alto? What can we do to save $4 million? And so we tasked the city manager to come back to us with proposed cuts and to see what is the least harmful of those cuts to city of Palo, Palo Alto. Now, we may determine that there aren't $4 million of cuts, frankly, that we can make at this time, but it's a good exercise, and it's one that we need to do, and it's one that we need to figure out how we actually get to the stage where we do the initial step of keeping up, and that's before paying off any of our unfunded liability, it's not making the problem worse. So that was really the thinking behind this year's budget. That was the one thing we did. Things we didn't do, we didn't add anything to the budget, really, and say, this is my pet project as council member so-and-so, I want this in the budget. We didn't play around with, you know, we want to lower this fee, we want to lower that, we want to do, we, it's a very non-political budget. Basically, it's the city manager's budget, with the exception of saying, come back to us with $4 million in possible cuts. And it's a good exercise to go through because we don't know what it would be, and we need to start somewhere. And that's really what this is. It's a tentative step in that direction of how do we solve this long-term issue? So that's what we're doing. Now, the other thing I wanted to just talk briefly about is prioritizing our capital projects. So anyone who thinks we haven't prioritized our capital budget should look at this. This is the priority of our capital budgets. If you go through this, you will see that there are certain projects we're doing this year, certain projects we have planned for next year, and certain projects we have start the year after, and certain projects the year after that, and certain projects we had start in five years. That is what prioritization means. We have prioritized our capital budgets. Now, as you go through this stuff, if you want to, you could say, we want to move these different things around. That's not prioritization, that's reprioritization. And there are possible capital projects and new items that are not in here. You may, as a council member or as a member of the public, have an item that's not in this book. Again, that is reprioritization of capital budgets. I also would draft your attention, bring your attention to this staff report, which is the semi-annual update on the status of capital improvement program projects. If you don't want to wade through this entire book, this is actually the best summary of our prioritization of capital projects, and I would encourage everybody who's interested in that issue to read this. So that's really what the committee did. So I think everyone basically, with that framework, it's a simple budget. It really is. It's the city manager's budget with that directive to the city manager, come back to us and figure out how to save $4 million. And then we, as a committee, will look at what that means to Palo Alto and make the decision if that's where we want to go with this. So if you have any questions about the process or where we are on that, I think myself or council member Phil Seth or council member Koo can probably answer them. Thanks. Oh, one other thing, yes, two other things, actually. I also wanted to really thank our department heads. Every department head came before the finance committee, and we went through their budget and asked questions about virtually every item on their budget. And this process took hours. We were there all day for, what, two days?
Three.
Three days, all day. And so this was not, you know, not a minor process. I don't want people to think that we rubber-stamped it when I say this, we did not. We asked questions, and we went through every item, line by line, and asked the department head to defend their budget and why they had what they had in there. And I know that's a tough process, and I wanted to thank every department head, who I think they all did a fabulous job. And I also wanted to thank Kylie and Lalo for their hard work on this, and other people that supported you on doing it. There was, I, I forget their names, but there were two great people that presented the budgets. So maybe you could just tell us who they were again?
Definitely. I think you are referring to the budget team, which are scattered throughout council chambers this evening.
Yes, there they are.
But Paul Harper, Steve Guagliardo, Jesse DeChamps, Chris Yee, Alexandra Harris, Jamie Perez, Tritali Poliwal, and Kayla Shapiro, all helped beside, behind the scenes, as you say.
And I wanted to say, as the finance chair, I thought you guys did a fabulous job, and we really appreciated the effort.
They're pretty easy to spot, they look like, they're the people who look like they haven't slept for about four months, okay?
And with that, I'd like to move the, the staff motion, the finance committee, which is really the finance committee motion, which is set forth on the, on the slide.
Okay, there's been a motion from the chair of the finance committee, council member Scharf, and a second from the vice mayor, and vice mayor, do you want to speak to your second?
Well, I don't have too much to add to what the, what the finance chair said. So I, I see this as a very important budget in a number of ways. This one begins to take the first step towards keeping up with our growing unfunded pension liability. And if you look at, if you look at the costs, I mean, one of the things that you see from this budget is that, you know, costs are increasing slowly, even though headcount is actually declining somewhat. And there are a number of reasons for that. But we are in a long-term squeeze on finances caused principally by the increasing cost structure of the Bay Area, including construction costs, which impacts all our, basically all our projects. And the growing cost of servicing the existing unfunded pension and health liability, which, I don't have the exact number in front of me, but it's approaching about 10, it's approaching 10% of the general fund and growing more quickly than basically any other major expense. And so we are beginning to see that crowd out, spending on other city services, fixing potholes, catching burglars, putting out fires, things like that. And so this... And so this step is a very prudent one to get that under control. The magic of compounding means that the later we postpone this, the more difficult and dramatically more difficult it will be to get in front of it. So you have only to consider that, you know, nominally, we budget, we balance our budgets every year. So why is it that we have a $500 million pension, unfunded pension liability, which we've developed, which we've grown in only 15 years, because in 2002, you know, our pensions were fully funded? And the answer is, that $8 million that Greg was talking about, or five, or whatever it was in years past in smaller budgets, that unfunded gap, if we don't pay it, grows at 7% a year. And over 25 or 30 years, the numbers become very large. And the way that we've done it every year is to write an IOU. And that's how we get to $500 million in unfunded pension liabilities, which doesn't include, as was pointed out, OPEB and other things that contribute another couple hundred million dollars as well. So if we don't begin to address and keep up now, the problem will be much, much worse in the future. So it's prudent that we do this. 8% of the general fund expenses, sorry, $8 million of the general fund expenses is only 4%, right? So a $4 million cut is 2%. We have to be able to do this, because the truth is, we are spending the money. The budget does not truly balance, once you take into account the real costs of pensions. And so we need to deal with this now. Thank you. And finally, if I can add one more thing, I want to add my thanks to the whole Finance Team who worked, like, you know, a tremendous amount of work. And this'll be our last chance to thank Lalo for his years of working on budgets for us, so thank you, Lalo, right? And Jim. And I see the beard is gone.
Yes, and I'll say a little about the pension later, but right now, both Tom and Lydia have their lights on. Tom?
Yep. I was gonna say, somehow Lalo looks younger. So, yeah, I just wanted to echo, thank you to staff and the Finance Committee for all the hard work. I know it really is a lot of work. And I also appreciate the committee looking for those $4 million in cuts. I'd like to note, the city council's cutting two positions, so we're doing our part.
Yep.
That is funny. And the pay is so incredible.
So I had a few questions. So slides. So in the presentation, Slide 3, it looks like the second largest source of revenue was use of reserves. Is that typical, or is that unusual?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember DuBois. That is typical, and that's actually a result of our enterprise funds primarily, not general fund, obviously, as we didn't draw from the budget stabilization reserve this year. In our enterprise funds, we have reserves for rate stabilization. We have reserves for operating needs. We also have capital improvement fund reserves. So depending on the financial activities in the enterprise funds on any given year, we do routinely tap those reserves, always remaining within the council-approved reserve levels, though.
We have a whole set of established policies that guide the parameters about what the...
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to make that clear to the public. And again, we are a people business, service business, and, you know, 60% of the budget is salaries. I do, you know, we are, cities across the country are going through waves of retirements with the baby boomers retiring. I wondered if, have we done any analysis of what would the impact be on the city finances if, with kind of a younger sales force, I mean, workforce, not sales force, workforce?
Good evening, Lalo Perez, Chief Financial Officer. We had our actuary do some runs on the pension side, and what they determined that it's probably a 15- to 20-year-out savings that we would see as a result of the change in pension formula in the flip that you're talking about. They don't necessarily see it in the short years, and that's general across California.
Okay, thank you. And I was curious, is the ERP replacement included in this budget?
It is, however, we placed it in a reserve in the capital improvement side of the IT Fund as we continue to evaluate next steps.
So it's just a question, like, which year it would happen in, or?
I think there's multiple questions. Not only what year would it happen in, but what would the funding level need be, what would the timing of that need be, et cetera. And so I think it was very evident, as we were developing this budget, that there is a potential cost, but it is set aside in the reserve instead of a live preparation.
If I just might add, just put a little more texture to that. I think as we have been narrowing down what our options are, as often the case, you find that while you want to sort of, you want to dive deeper on the analysis because it's such an important decision.
Yeah.
We also have a number of staff transitions at play, and the idea of, we want to time the decisions and the ultimate implementation, not at times when we're missing the Chief Financial Officer and lots of other key people who've got to support and help drive that. So we're recalibrating our schedule. I think actually, even in a couple of months, we could give the council an update as to where we are on that.
I mean, the reason I mention, I really think it's key to running the city efficiently with fewer people, so it's a huge deal. On the unfunded liability, I think the pension transparency memo is really important, be able to report and track kind of clearly what's happening. I do want to make sure that, again, we don't overreact and overpay our unfunded liability compared to other cities. You know, I think there's a structural issue in California. But I think we need to keep a balance. I think we're doing a good job of that, as long as our budget reserve levels are where they are, and we make some payments into the Section 115 trust. I think we're striking the right balance. I brought it up a week or two ago when we talked about utilities. I am concerned about kind of the base level utility bill, and I really want to see us evaluate how people on fixed incomes and low incomes, kind of how we're allocating utilities really across the board, and making sure we're really incentivizing conservation. I think we're doing a good job on our infrastructure projects. Obviously, we need to keep our eye on the ball there. It's really, it's not easy to get these projects completed, and I think we're moving them all along pretty well. And we're going to start to see a lot of benefits, I think, from the work that we're investing in now, and hopefully, the golf course is a great example of that. If people haven't gone out yet, it's a great golf course, and hopefully, we'll start to be generating revenue there again. We do need to start to look for funding sources for Cubber Lane and the animal shelter. I know it's on everybody's radar, but we're really going to have to start focusing on that. And then another question, I saw we eliminated the council upgrades, which I support, but we were also told that, you know, the audio system isn't equated, and if it breaks, we're in trouble. So what's the plan, I guess, on that front?
Did you, so an answer? Yeah, actually, it is interesting. I bet I can't remember what it was, a week or so ago, we couldn't do a meeting in here or wherever, pardon me, with the Planning Commission, particularly because there was some breakdown in the equipment and had to scramble. So we do have issues. But I, clearly, the thinking, the direction from the council was, there's a continuum of investments we need to make, and then things that would be nice to make within that original budget estimate that we brought you. And I think the committee's recommendation was, we're going to have to come back and have a discussion. I don't know if we go to Finance first, or we come straight to the council. We go to Finance to talk about it, and then come back to the council. We'll do that again, I think, in the first quarter sometime, that discussion. I think that the committee felt it was a better decision to signal that we're taking the whole $2 million out of the budget essentially right now, knowing that we would, I don't know if they were agreeing or not disagreeing with that, but we're going to have to spend some money, but the thought was, we're going to have to appropriate that. Let's just come back. We put the money off in a reserve. It's not appropriated in the budget, and we'd have to explicitly say, "Okay, we need to make these investments for that purpose." So the potential is there for funding, but I think the committee felt that they didn't want a $2 million capital project sort of just blinking there in the CIP budget and raising questions about what we're going to do. And it seemed easier, since we're going to have to come back and articulate a specific cost, to just put it back, whatever that amount is, in the budget, you know, as a mid-year adjustment.
Okay. Yeah, I would like to say, I have full faith in our auditor. I think she's done a great job. She's an accomplished professional. She's recognized by her peers. I do, I would like to see us have the right level of senior staff in her department. I think we're a little heavy on kind of Level 1 staff and don't have as many senior staff as we have budgeted. So I don't support eliminating positions, but I need to make, I think we need to make sure we have people at the right level. On the Staff Motion, the things that are being referred back to Finance, how do those come back to council?
Well, I'm trying to find the language here specifically, but I think we made the point. Obviously, the reductions that we're going, the first one is dealing with, what are the specific $4 million or up to $4 million in budget adjustments that would need to take place? We would have to come back to the council and have the council validate the recommendations of the Finance Committee. My thinking is the same thing with the Finance Committee on coming back on discussion of the municipal fees schedule to go ahead and, you know, again, expecting that any changes would come back to the city council, but it need not be necessarily limited to what the Finance Committee would do. We would bring this back in a way that if the council could ask any question, you know, whether there was a specific recommendation from the council, the committee, or not. But the committee would have an opportunity to sort of preview and make recommendations on the muni fee schedule. The council had the ability to modify or adopt or, you know, alter whatever they...
Is that kind of mid-year budget, or?
Well, I think our plan was, really, we wanted to come back to the council this calendar year, before December, because for us, once we get into November and December, the staff really is starting to work in earnest on the development of the next-year budget. So we can do, we can support the committee and the council's work most effectively by first and second quarter meetings with you.
So I don't see any of that in the motion, and does it need to be, or you would just bring it back?
Yeah, I don't think it needs to be added to the motion, but...
Okay. So I do, I have one item I kind of want to discuss with my colleagues, and I don't know if the Finance Committee already discussed it, but, so we have $4.5 million budgeted for changes on Embarcadero near El Camino. That's a pretty large project, a large infrastructure project, and we're going to be talking about grade separation alternatives. And to me, they seem very related. I mean, we're going to be talking, I think, tomorrow about potentially closing Churchill. And this is not widening Embarcadero, but it's, I think it could impact the flow of traffic there in different ways. And so I'd really like to see us reconsider the best layout for that section, once we have preferred separation changes. And so again, I'm open to staff, but I think, I don't think we should spend that money until we really figure out what's happening with Churchill, or at least have a preferred alternative. And it's, again, a big chunk of money. Otherwise, I want to bring it up.
Okay, well, I think that's a nice preview for us, even for tomorrow, could re-mention this. I mean, I think the council can adopt the budget right now. It's, it is a budget, but, you know, we're not going to go out and start spending it tomorrow in the chance of the context maybe of having a little bit deeper dive with that, and I appreciate the heads up.
I mean, I was going to suggest maybe that we return those Embarcadero Road improvements to council, along with the preferred grade separation alternatives. Do you think that's too restrictive, or?
Well, I wouldn't want to be forced to link them together if we ultimately found one or the other could proceed, but I think the idea that there is some potential relevance to that project with what we're talking about on the grade sap, that you want us to, you certainly don't want us to proceed on implementing the Embarcadero project until we've gotten some direct action or direction from the council as it relates to grade sap.
What do you think about returning it to the Finance Committee along with these other items?
I think it's a Finance Committee issue. I think it's a council issue. I assume that you're thinking that, my recollection of it was that there was a right-hand turn lane that we decided not to install, and we weren't thinking at that time about closing Churchill.
Yeah, I don't think we just considered...
So there was a lot more traffic capacity. There was two options, and we chose the option that had less traffic capacity, is my recollection, and prioritized something else rather than that. And the question is, does the council want to revisit that issue and make sure they made the right decision before we spend the $4.5 million?
Yeah, well, yeah, exactly. We didn't anticipate closing Churchill, but I don't know that we just want to approve those money in the budget right now. So do you have a suggestion?
Well, I'm looking to staff about how they, I mean, I, first of all, think that should be a separate, a separate vote, frankly, because, I mean, I think we'd have to have support to do that. I don't want to just throw it into the budget. But I do think that if that's something the council wants to do, I'd listen to staff about what's the best way to do it.
Well, again, I think tonight, you really need to take your action on the budget plan that we have. The concern, Chief Transportation Official Josh Mello just told me, we're almost at 100% on the design on this right now. That's different from the construction, of course. I think the real question is that the council, the council that is previewing the reduction from nine to seven council members on the rail issues, wants to understand the nexus and the implication from the design that we have planned on Embarcadero and El Camino, and how that may affect some of the decisions you want to make on grade sap, right? I mean, that's really what the question, it isn't, was that a good project to do? The question is, let's make sure we understand that decision in the context of possibilities related to grade sap. And so I think it's the appropriate place, is for the council, as you're discussing grade sap, to say that, and that's why I go back to saying, I appreciate the heads up even tonight, because we could be a little bit better prepared for tomorrow night's meeting when we come to the council on that.
I mean, I think it could potentially even be a grade separation project, related project, but, so it's a question of how we account for it in the budget.
I would, I think it's a good, I think it's a good catch, right? The question is, should we change the budget tonight on that? And I would say that, you know, the plan of record is the plan of record until there's a new plan of record, and at this point, we haven't made such a decision. So I would think it's premature to change the budget. On the other hand, that might change quickly.
I'd also point out that if we start talking about grade separations, there are two people on council who would have to be recused. Yeah, again, I'm just suggesting we refer to Finance for discussion or something, but...
Why don't we just agendize it for them to bring us information on it and come back to council?
Whenever it's appropriate. Now, it's all up in the air, so I don't think we should change something tonight.
Well, so again, we're approving $4.5 million tonight, so. So how about that, Jim, if we just ask that we agendize a discussion on this?
On this, this, okay, for the full council, or for the full rail council?
Full rail council.
Yeah, that'd be appropriate. I would just say in some detail, actually, it was interesting, if you look at the actual project itself, most of the appropriation, including construction, was to take place in this fiscal year, which ends next week. We are not doing that because we had lost staff and some other issues. So we would be carrying forward most of that and re-appropriating that into FY '19. We always do that, you know, as we get, you know, a couple of months into the budget and stuff. So I think, I think we're good on, you know, we're not going to be going out and doing construction on the project. It would be a good time for us to be... It would be a good time for us to be talking about it. And we'll either look at how we can, whether we can eke out enough time tomorrow to talk about it if it's appropriately noticed, and if not, we'll put it on the next agenda.
So, the one thing I think we should say on this is that while the discussion may be in the context of the rail council, the actual decision on what's made there should really go to the full council, because people are not conflicted out of that issue. And so, we should, we can look at it, well, they're related, but they're also individual council member, everyone should be able to vote on that issue.
Clearly, if you're saying you would somehow remove or modify that Embarcadero project, that would be something appropriate for the whole council.
I'm also going to do a time check at this point, interrupting you-
So, I'm just not clear, or do we need to add the idea of agendizing it?
Tom, I need to say something before you go on.
Okay.
I'm doing a time check. It's now 9:45. We're an hour and 15 minutes behind, so as we go through our comments, it would be helpful if we are as expedient as possible.
I don't think you need, we don't need an amendment to this budget direction tonight for us to be clear to just put this on the council rail grade set discussions.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to, Lydia, you were on the committee, you were next, but I'm going to ask Karen to go next, because usually, we hit the committee last. Karen?
Thank you very much. So, I'll try to be time sensitive, but we do usually also have, we do usually also have a backup of the next council meeting before break to finish up anything we don't get to tonight on the first meeting, so just putting it out there.
We have next week.
Yes, we do. And so, if we don't get finished, we will need to do that, although we have a full agenda, but-
I think we have Wednesday night, right? Thursday's Policy Services.
Could it be Saturday? Sunday?
Saturday, Sunday. So, first, let me start with, you know, thanking the staff for bringing this forward. It's always a yeoman's, a yeoman's job, and thank Lalo for leading this. And before you take off, thank you also for something else really significant you did, which was finding Kylie. So, thank you for bringing her in, so you'll be missed just a little bit less, because Kylie will be here, so.
I asked you all's help in us keeping Kylie to your per- your-
I hope I just did that. And also, thanks to the finance committee for, sorry, for all the heavy lifting that you did. I do have some questions, and one of them will come as no surprise to anyone, which is, I didn't understand the language. Let me, let me quickly find the language. Sorry, I have several things tabbed here, so, oh, yeah, here, okay. On packet page 275, this is regarding the tree trimming cycle. So, I'm delighted that the Urban Forest Master Plan is now being funded, because it's been delayed for a couple of years. I'm delighted that's been funded, but I did not understand what this sentence meant. And again, this is a fourth bullet down on packet page 275. A $150,000 reallocation from tree trimming contracts to the Urban Forest Master Plan, maintaining a seven-year trimming cycle and providing ongoing funding for the implementation of the Urban Forest Master Plan. So, how are we going to take out $150,000 and maintain a seven-year tree trimming cycle? Because I remember from years past, $150,000 impacted a seven-year trimming cycle, so-
Staff magic, I will explain it.
Exactly, as Jim said, just magic. No, council member, you are absolutely correct. We have had detailed conversations over this. What the finance committee had asked staff to do, now that we have been over 12 months into our new contract, is to reevaluate where we're at. What we actually found is that we have been a little bit more efficient in that contract, and so, we've actually been able to, within the contract authority, exceed our seven-year goal. And so, we have actually been trimming on a sometimes five or six-year cycle time. And so, ultimately, Mike Sardar and the Public Works team looked at the contract, looked at the seven-year cycle, and deemed that they could maintain the seven-year cycle while also reducing costs of that contract, so that they could fund Urban Forest Master Plan on an ongoing basis.
That's fortuitous productivity.
It is.
It is fortuitous productivity, and if I were going to be an auditor, I would say, why wasn't that identified to begin with, so that we could all go ahead and fund the Urban Forest Master Plan without going through the-
It was done by our staff as their real-time auditing. They do the same thing, honestly. We're constantly looking at things and what the schedules are and the return, so, I mean, it just was a timing issue of when we were producing the budget and when they saw this.
Okay, so-
And just as a reminder, it is a three-year contract, so they also needed some time to actually see and materialize, since it was a new vendor. So, there's some lag time of needing to get work done to get the data.
That makes sense, and thank you, thank you for that. So, happy, happy on that one. I did make notes here. I didn't find in here any money to improve the animal shelter. And when Penn comes on board, they have indicated that there need to be some improvements for them to be able to function as a no-kill animal shelter because of dilapidated conditions at the shelter. So, I didn't see any money in here anywhere for that. And I had understood earlier, I would think there was some $800,000, $700,000?
Yeah, we have $800,000 plus in the budget itself. We are having some continuing unfolding discussions with Pets in Need about the capital plant and the adequacy of that, and that's some of the things we're working through, but we do have, how much Kylie?
There's $831,000, sorry, $831,000 is appropriated in FY '19 in the capital improvement budget.
Can you tell me where, I didn't find it, so, can you tell me where it is?
It's Project PE-19002. You can see it in the summary section on page 65 of the capital budget, and I'm not quite sure where the project page is, but if you, we search for that, I'm sure I can find it.
Okay, all right, great. That's, thank you for clarifying that. Comments were made earlier about the city auditor's office, and I wanted to know what, also, what this meant. On packet page 273, 272, it talks about separate motion, include a review of the request by the finance committee regarding the city auditor's office rescinding the committee's initial directive. So, what does that mean?
So, ultimately, the committee had made-
I know what the initial conversation was, but what does this mean?
Right, what it means is that during the budget wrap-up, the committee wanted to rescind a motion that they had previously majority approved, and so, they wanted to codify that, basically. However, they did want us to continue to, as part of kind of our ongoing discussions with the finance committee about cost savings, changes in service delivery, to not let the auditor's office service delivery drop off our radar, but they did toss it to staff to just include that as something that we look at. So, that's all. We were trying to, so the actual motion had previously eliminated FTEs and changed our table of work, and so, we wanted to-
So, I don't think, you know, we can very effectively speak to this as the staff. I think that you had a, a, let's call it tentative motion, or whatever it is, by the finance committee, that, you know, there were a lot of questions about, and so, the committee pretty much just rescinded that direction, and didn't really have time to, I think, sort of follow up and have discussions about, again, what are the best ways that, I mean, to service the functions of the auditor's office, the production. You heard some comments even about senior versus less, you know, I think finance committee wants to, wanted to have the opportunity to continue to discuss that in some forum. I would say this, that the finance committee can't enact anything on its own without having to come back to the council, and it's one of the reasons we didn't feel that that really needed to be included in the motion, because this is just sort of, was it being left at finance committee as some discussion that it would pursue, knowing that any, if there were to be any change, or any recommended changes at all from the status quo. I don't care, they say we need to add three more auditors, whatever, they get to the end of the day, that would have to come to the city council.
Understood. And so, since that motion was rescinded that was initially approved, can we assume that outsourcing of the city auditor staff is off the table? Do I understand that correctly? Someone?
Yeah, I mean, the way I read the-
Microphone, Jim. Microphone, please.
Well, the way I read the motion is, the committee rescinded its directive on outsourcing the-
Okay, so, so that's, so I will take it as what I said is accurate.
We can only act on what are formal motions and stuff by committees or the council.
Okay, and I will, this is a little bit of a redundancy, but I just want to show that the concern is, we do have, you know, several level-one auditors in the auditor's office right now. There's no discretionary fund for the auditor. If there are level-one staffers, and that's what we're funding right now, if we needed to bring on, or the city auditor needed to bring on someone who was a higher level, there's no money currently in the budget to do that. So, I just want to make that point. City Attorney, did you have something to say? So, that was that question. Okay, then, the Office of Sustainability, I had a question on that, because on packet page 274, it shows a savings of $70,000. But if I look at, oh, I flipped to another page in here. But if I look at Office of Sustainability, if I could find it again, wherever it is, I don't seem to be able to pinpoint it right now. Anyway, if I look at the Office of Sustainability in the operating budget, it's much, the department's much more than $70,000, even just in staffing, and I know it's going to be subsumed in city manager's office and dispersed among other departments. That said, a lot of the work is done that way now, so I was just kind of questioning why the savings was only $70,000.
Well, I'd have to have the staff to help us out. I don't know to what extent we have any of the grant funding in here, but we basically have a combination of reducing the funding for the chief sustainability officer, but increasing some funding for some part-time or contract staff that we had in the, in the office, for the need to, one, be able to deliver on some grants that we have, and two, to be able to sort of rationalize a part-time position with what the real needs are in the, in the office. And so, with the departure, with the ending of the chief sustainability officer position, we're going to need an increase in the time from, from other program staff we have in the, in the department who are working less than full-time.
I think it's only part of a year or two, right? Because it hasn't taken effect until-
Right, yeah. Yeah, and it doesn't take-
Could you say that again, Eric? I didn't understand what-
The, the sort of switch-over doesn't take effect until November of the fiscal year, so we've got, you know, we're five months in-
Got it, got it, that makes sense, that makes sense. Concur about the, thank you for taking the chamber's big project off, but there is chambers audio, there is a chambers audio issue that we've talked about before that needs to be fixed, and I was liaison to another meeting that also couldn't take place in here because of audio and video issues. Just a few questions about, and I think the fastest way to do them is looking at, I also had tagged the Embarcadero El Camino. Fastest way to probably go through them is this way, which is, the, I'm going to put Rob DeGosse on the spot here just for a second. I think I saw him back there earlier. So, I've yet to see a senior rate, excuse me, a low-income rate for community gardens fees, and that's been an ongoing discussion for three or four years. Maybe Kristin can answer that. Thank you. Tell you what, while you're coming forward to do that, I'm going to ask another one, which is clarification on some of these, you know, it's the changed fees, and it has to do with, you know, foothill parks, aquatics, same thing with renting a park space for events, and renting of foothill parks for, it talks about increasing to align with market value. How's market value ascertained? And these are things that we want the public to have good access to, so how, how is market value being ascertained? And how much, how much money does this really amount to? So, is it really befitting and behooving us to raise these rates that impact the public very directly?
So, this was the concept, we were thinking about a finance looking at these things, so maybe we let Kristin give her initial answer here, but I would suggest if this starts getting complicated, that we ask that this be something that looks at finance, and then it does come back to the council, separate from tonight.
Yeah, well, I lumped several of those together, so we won't go through each one individually, but you get the drift, yeah. Okay, Kristin, thank you.
Good evening, Kristin O'Kane, Community Services. With respect to your question about adult fee reduction, I believe that was your first question.
Low-income garden rental rates, it's been a years-long question.
So, our current fee reduction program is for seniors, disabled residents, and also youth, and in fiscal year '19, we are adding another category for our fee reduction program, which is low-income adults. So, we're doing it in fiscal year '19, just on a trial basis, to see what sort of interest there is in that program, and that would apply to community gardens.
Excellent, thank you very much. I'd not seen that, and I really appreciate your adding that, about the market rate-
Karen, we're really running out of time.
This is our one crack in the year to address the budget.
It is, however, it is 10 o'clock, so it would really be helpful if you condensed it.
I don't have too many more, but I do appreciate the opportunity to do these, unless we can commit to continuing this to next Monday.
We have, we have two items tonight that we cannot continue.
I understand. I said continuing this to next Monday, if we don't-
There's not really no clapping, we're not going to continue that. Anything in the fee area, though, this won't be the council's only chance this year. So, any of the fees would be part of the municipal fee schedule referral that's going to the finance committee, and that will come back to council also.
Well, I have to raise the question about golf fees, because I've gotten several emails, and the council has gotten some emails about it. When it came to council, I'd asked about senior rates, and I don't recall that that information was provided at the time, and I've gotten, just me personally, I've gotten several emails talking about how much higher our senior rates are than other communities and other golf courses. And we can say, well, this is a new and really wonderful course, but if seniors who are part of, you know, golfing groups, if they decide to go other places, which I've been told that two groups are looking at doing that, 100% of nothing is nothing, so.
We can try, but I'm guessing that this is not a two-sentence answer that we provide. It sounds like a longer conversation.
I would agree that it is, and Karen, I think what we need to do is schedule that for another time, or sit down with the golf course professionals and understand what's happening.
So, can staff bring something back when we come back in August to talk about senior rates for the golf course? Jim?
Yes, is, I mean, I sort of defer to finance committee, since we're looking at fees with finance committee, but if you wanted to come back straight to council, we can do that.
I think, given how new it is, we need some feedback on, on, you know, is it, is this the type of fun, of charges, the fees that they're using, does that, does that make sense?
Okay.
But don't we need to let it season a little bit before, so we have some feedback? Yeah.
I think people are going out there and trying to play, and they're just, you know, really having sticker shock at what it costs to play. I don't think people have to wait to get used to that. I think they're not going to get used to it. They think it's high. Again, I've gotten several emails in there.
So, I think we'll come back in August to the council then, if that's okay, because I've seen those emails and those concerns too, and not to minimize them, but we don't want to misrepresent- we don't want to misrepresent the overall experience, so we'll have to make sure that we, you know, give you a fuller report on what is happening out there. You know what I mean? So, I mean, if we have concerns about what the rates are, and we have underperforming numbers about who's participating and using the golf course, that's, you know, that's, that's really a concern. That's why I mean, I think there are a lot of angles to this.
Okay, I look forward to that coming back. And then I think my last question that I really want to get out tonight is, under planning, um, I have a couple of other questions about fees, but I can let those go. But under the, um, planning arborist, um, is disappearing. This is the budget, page 350, and there's something being, and there's something being added that's a half-time landscape architect/park planner, and I don't see how those two are related.
Sure. At a very, very high level, the, there are duties that are being done associated with, I want to say, some state mandates, and restrictions and rules associated with kind of our development, arborist planning and whatnot. And so, a landscape architect has a license that's required to review these types of plans. And so, the department requested to do a reclassification of the position in order to accomplish those activities in-house as opposed to using a contractor. So, the reason why you see it, the FTE decreasing, is because it's actually partially being shifted to the Development Services Department. So, we're not actually eliminating any positions, we're just reorganizing between Public Works and DSD.
And, yeah, it's eliminating just a tiny portion of it, but I just want to make sure we still have, you know, planning arborist, unless what you're saying is that-
We have as much capacity, we actually have more capacity on staff by, but with having this certification or credentials of the landscape architect, so.
So, that person, that person, that position can do project arborist work? That's my question.
I believe so. There's a much more detailed description of this proposal on the operating budget book, page 354.
Would you have a good answer? Okay, go ahead. I can answer it.
Members of the council, Mike Sardar, Public Works Director. So, what we have done, as you are likely aware, council member Holman Dave Doctor are former planning officers retired, so we are reclassing that position to a higher level to allow the person to not only do the planning arborist work, but also do water-efficient landscape ordinance requirement certification, landscape review, and other detailed reviews of planning applications.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. And then, I promise you, this is my last one. And I don't mean to be snarky about this, but on, and I found this on packet page 305. It's legal review mitigation monitoring environmental impact report, and there's somebody says there's a mitigation monitoring too. And if I put on my community members hat, I'm not sure the community understands that we really are doing mitigation monitoring. So, maybe staff would like to comment on that now or at a time in the near future. At, at the top.
You're talking about the fees?
Yeah, it's on the fees. It's legal review mitigation monitoring.
Right, right here.
And the, and the next page is also talking about, you know, mitigation monitoring, mitigated negative deck. There are several aspects of that, and again-
If these are, these are existing fees- These are fees that we already have in existence.
I understand.
Yep. And so, the question is-
Does this actually happen? Do these, do the mitigation monitoring functions actually happen?
Okay, well, I think we-
Like I say, you can respond to that tonight or another time, but please do.
Yeah, I think we could, can we just send you, the council, an email on that?
If you would send the council an email, that would be wonderful.
All right, that's fine.
Okay, great. Thank you, and that concludes my questions.
Okay, coming down the line, Adrian? No comments? Corey?
I know we have a lot of speakers, I think, on the next item, so I'll keep my comments very short. First, I want to say thank you to the finance committee, and thank you to the staff for a lot of work on this, both the finance staff and also the department heads, as, as other members had pointed out. A lot of work went into this. I think we are making some important changes in how we handle our structural budget challenges. I think we are really heading in the right direction. I think it's, it's worth pointing out, because we often get asked, how come you can't balance your budget? Well, we're balancing our budget. You know, how come you can't get a handle on, on pension liabilities? Well, thanks to the work of staff and the finance committee, we are getting a handle on our pension liabilities. So, I really want to express my gratitude for the work that you've all done on this. Couple of comments going forward. I'm not going to pick fights tonight by making motions, but I'm going to preview some things that I think we need to think about going forward. One, I think we must not gut the city auditor's office. Two, I think we should not waste tens of millions of dollars on boondoggles, and that means that ultimately, the downtown garage is something I increasingly think we do not need and cannot afford. And third, as we look to coming years, I think that we are still probably woefully under-investing in climate change adaptation, and I think we should think about that very hard and continue to study what we can do to prepare ourselves for the various threats that climate change presents to Palo Alto. Thank you very much.
Okay, Lydia, you get to close it down.
So, so, thank you, Lalo and Kylie, for, and your staff for all the work that has gone into this. I just wanted to clarify, on the auditor's office, my understanding was the directive was for auditor to return after our break to give us a detailed plan on how she's going to have the office, so, office productive. So, in essence, if I understand that correctly, then her office is still in limbo. It's not, it's not really set out that they're going to continue on and their staff positions are secure. It's actually in limbo, if that's what I'm understanding it to be. And so, therefore, if that's the case, then, then that's some, that's kind of unacceptable, unacceptable to me.
So, let me try to help out with that. I appreciate the question, but the, the budget that you're going to adopt right now is going to include the funding and the, and the positions as authorizing the positions and the, what we call the table of org. All of those things will be adopted, and it'll be exactly like it has been. So, there is no, there is no change in that.
There's no change.
That's correct.
And, and whatever is decided, it does come back to the full council.
Exactly. Yep.
Now, on the SB1 funds that's assumed in this budget, since it is, is in litigation or it's pending, how, how secure are we with receiving that money?
Thank you, council member, for the question.
I mean, what is the contingency plan if we don't get it?
That's a great question. Knowing that these funds are currently being contested, we programmed in this, we programmed them in this budget in the outer years to fund streets and sidewalk, the replacement cycle associated with them. So, ultimately, we are still on track to meet the council's goal of, I want to say, 85 for the pavement maintenance index. But what we did do is we just, in the outer years, assumed that this would continue to increase funding for kind of those infrastructure improvements. The reason why we did this is because we have enough general fund, funding planned outside of this SB1 funding to meet the council go, goal, I'm sorry. So, we put it in a low-risk area, basically, in the capital improvement plan.
Council goal as to which project?
The council goal for pavement maintenance.
Pavement maintenance.
The FY19 funds for SB1 are recommended to fund the Charleston-Rostodaro project, but it's in 2020, 2021, 2022, the ongoing plan. We just placed it in our streets maintenance.
And every year, if SB1 goes through, that's the money that's going to be coming in in order to fund the Charleston-Rostodaro, whatever it's allotted for?
No, the Charleston-Rostodaro was a one-time item for FY19. And as part of the legislation, we actually have to go to council on an annual basis to actually tell council what we're going to spend the money on. So, for FY19 specifically, I want to say it was May of this year, we actually said, okay, in May, the 1.2 that's planned for FY19 is planned for Charleston-Rostodaro. And as Jim alluded to, for the five-year CIP, in the outer years, we've planned to put it towards streets.
And we also have a contingency plan for the two Marriott hotels, you know, the, kind of like determined use for the TOT.
Yeah.
So, there is a contingency plan for that funding, should-
We have an item this evening that would potentially provide alternative funding sources should those not come through.
Okay, and then I just want to say, you know, I, I do agree with council member Tanaka's prioritization in terms of the 2014 city council infrastructure plans, and if prioritization is not the right wording here, then reprioritization. I really would hope that, you know, I really had hoped that we could kind of review all of that and kind of take into account that we do have a funding gap, although, you know, everything that was presented here today was very positive, where it does come out balanced. However, moving forward, I do see that gap, and there's a lot of money that is going towards pension, and we want everything. I mean, there's the JMZ, and there is the animal shelter, there's Cubly, and then there's, of course, um, these, these plans, the nine infrastructure city council 2014 projects. So, reprioritization is important. I know, I see eyes rolling and eyes going in different directions, but it is something that I think that council member Tanaka is correct on, and I support him on that. So, it's unfortunate that we can't go visit it again, and I don't see any reason why we can't, but I know that probably is, um, something that I'm not going to be able to support on this budget if we can't do that. Thank you.
Okay, that is about to take us to a vote. So, I'm going to say just a couple of words, I want to get moving. I know, we know you're all out there, and sorry we're running so late, but I do want to say a final word about this. Interestingly enough, both the vice mayor and council member Tanaka came to me within 10 days of each other last year and said, it is time to do something about the pensions. For those of you who could remember way back to the olden days of the turn of the century in 2000, 2001, CalPERS was making so much money that they were coming in at 18% to 20% per year. As a result, a number of government agencies became somewhat complacent, and at least at the agency I was at then, they no longer collected from the employees, which was, which was very interesting, because it's led us to today, almost 20 years later, where a number of cities in this area have unfunded liability. An unfunded liability means just what it sounds like. You owe money to somebody, and you're going to have to pay it off at some point in time. Along the way, we began to do some negotiation, will continue to do some negotiation, but the $4 million that you hear coming out tonight of our budget is the first time we have done that. So, I'd really like to, if Tanaka, if council member Tanaka was here, I'd say something, but I would say to the vice mayor, good work. This is a, this is a sea change for us. This isn't just, just a small bump. This is the kind of thing we will try to continue on. And, and that way, it's, this is like your credit card. If you have a credit card at 18% or 19%, and you're paying it off every month, you know, you ought to find a way to get rid of that, because that, again, is the compound that Eric was talking about before. It builds up quickly. So, what we're attempting to do is keep, keep our unfunded liability down. As I recall, we are not maybe the highest in the county, but getting close. Yeah.
No, I think we're top 10 in the state.
Top 10 in the state. Okay, that's the best way to put it.
Per capita basis.
Yes, per capita, and that's not something we want to be proud of. That's something we want to deal with. So, I would say to them and to the rest of the finance committee, thank you for dealing with that tonight. People who serve here in the future will thank you, and the public will as well.
Madam Mayor, can I, just one thing, I want to amplify this, and I think put a little more clarity and actually give the council more credit than you're giving yourself even right now. We do have a-
I didn't go on and on enough?
Well, we do, we do have a high unfunded liability. A lot of that is due to the fact that we have a larger scale of services that we provide as a city, so we provide all of these utilities. What we do, though, do have is we get a bill every year from CalPERS that says, if you pay this bill, this is basically what they say, we have a bunch of assumptions. One of them is how much interest we're going to earn each year, and if you pay that bill the way we've submitted to you, in 30 years, you will have paid down your unfunded liability, and you'll be good. To our council's credit, you said, we don't believe that those assumptions are correct. We actually think a lower rate of investment return is correct, and that recalibration is what identified that $8 million. So, when I was in Sacramento on Friday, and in a meeting with CalPERS and the state lobbyists for the league and counties on the pension issues, and told them that our council wasn't buying the official assumption in the bill that CalPERS made but was recalibrating it, actually, people said, wow, that's, that's, that's a really good move. We'll be interested to see what other cities do. So, in this effort, the council's actually leading in comparison to other cities, saying, we're not going to count on the fact that you guys have estimated this correctly, we're going to use what we think is a more logical. And I will be surprised, I won't be surprised at all if we don't see some other cities around the state, of course, as we're successful with this, starting to mimic what you're advancing.
Yeah, thank, thank you for adding that on, because, indeed, we are a service-rich city, there's no question. But I think taking this, this particular tiger by the tail is, is, was an important move tonight, so I'm, I'm really pleased that we did that. And I hope the community is aware that this was a, a major step for us to be taking tonight. So, with that, we have a motion on the table, we have a second, I don't see any lights on. I would invite you to vote on the board. So, we, that passes on a seven to one, council member crew voting no.
Thank you all very much.
And Tanaka, and council, and council member Tanaka has left for the evening.
And Mayor Ness, if I could just take one moment-
Please.
As this is now Lalo and Jim's last budget adoption.
Yes, I know.
And they've done wonderful services for this organization for decades and decades, and I could not, as much praise as you have provided myself, as well as the Budget Office team, none of us could have gotten through without these two, so it will be-
Let's give them a round of applause.
Yeah.
You're going to see me again for a while, but you may not see Lalo in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, so it's different for Lalo. This is not only Lalo's last budget meeting, it's almost his last council meeting. So, I'll see you maybe next week, I'm not sure, but Lalo, we're sure going to miss you.
Should we take five while people reorder and reorganize?
All right. Take about a three-minute break just to let people get out of the, out of the council and back, and back in. Finished the budget for this evening, we have two items that are left tonight. The first one is number 15. And this item is.
We don't have a quorum.
I don't have a quorum. Hang on a minute. To the audience, we need a quorum, which is five. So is anyone out in the audience of?
Here we go.
Here we go, okay. So agenda item number 15 tonight is to adopt a resolution placing an initiative measure on the ballot in November to amend Title V of Palo Alto Municipal Code to limit healthcare costs that hospitals, medical clinics, and other healthcare providers might change patients and other payers. So our job tonight is to work together and come up with language that is going to be suitable, and I think effectively explain this on the ballot. So with that, I'm going to look at the city attorney for her introduction of this and for guidance in placing it on the agenda, and, excuse me, on the ballot in November.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple comments. We don't have a PowerPoint presentation on this item. This implements an action that council took just last week, directed us to come back with the administrative elements to place this initiative measure, which has sufficient signatures, which you certified last week, onto the November ballot. And we have come back to you with that. Along with that, we need to include the exact form of the question that will appear on the ballot. We give a great deal of thought to this and drafted it carefully. We did receive some formal correspondence with feedback on the language we'd proposed and did some more thinking about it, and we do have an at-places memo where we do recommend some minor changes to the initial language that we had proposed. Our task here in drafting the ballot language is to be both true and impartial, and to avoid prejudice either for or against the measure. And given the space limitations, obviously, important decisions need to be made about what elements to describe in one sentence, about the meaning of the measure, and what details to leave out. So we do recommend the language in the at-places memo that you have at your places this evening. I do want to comment on one other related matter. Last week, you did direct the staff on a longer timeline where you didn't specify a particular return date, that the staff worked to generate some factual and objective information about the potential effect of this measure, should it be adopted by the voters. And we did some initial thinking about that in my office and with the city manager, and we will be moving forward with that, but do want to let you know that, you know, this is potentially quite a complex measure, that, as we discussed last week, is, it's new, it's ambitious, there is no existing similar regulatory framework in any other city that we can point to to describe what is actually happening. So we're in a world of making some, working with folks to make some assessments and assumptions about how this might work. So we will come back to you after your summer break with an update on that, but our initial thinking is that we're likely to focus most closely on impacts that we have the most expertise in, which is the city organization itself, and what might be involved in administering a regulatory framework like the one that is reflected in this measure. So I just wanted to give you that update, and I'm here to answer questions about the ballot language. Otherwise, you have a resolution in front of you, you'll hear from the public, and then you'll adopt this and place this on the ballot.
Okay, I'd like to go to the public unless any of my colleagues have specific questions to ask previous to doing that. So for those of you who are here and want to speak to us on this, your name will come up on the board fairly soon, and we will, that will give you what order we're doing this in tonight. So we have three groups that are going to speak for, are going to speak for five of you, and then we have six people who are going to speak otherwise. So looking at our Vice Mayor, I'm going to let him decide our timing for tonight, we're pretty late, but what do you believe we can do for the groups of five?
I think five minutes for groups of five.
Okay, good. So five minutes for groups of five, and the rest of, you will get a considerably shorter amount of time, but you'll have your own time. So if we could start at this point with, were there any questions that needed to be answered from the council now? I don't see any lights on. So let's go to Kirk Kirshner, who is speaking for Sarah DuBois, Stephanie Bruzies, Karen Lambert, and Patrick Bartosz.
Good evening. I'm Kirk Kirshner, an attorney with Jones Day, and I'm representing both Stanford Healthcare and Palo Alto Medical Foundation tonight. I'm speaking to you all tonight about a single but very important issue, which is a proposed question for the ballot. First of all, we want to acknowledge that you have in front of you a revised statement of the ballot question from what was issued in the original staff report, and we appreciate those changes and the efforts to improve the accuracy of the question that will be presented to the voters. But we believe one additional change is necessary to ensure that the ballot question is accurate and not misleading to the Palo Alto voters. That change, and I believe you have the language in front of you, is to remove the words, quote, "type" and close quote, and also the words, quote, "healthcare costs," close quote, so that the question would read as follows. Shall the Palo Alto Municipal Code be amended to regulate and limit the amount that hospitals, medical clinics, and other healthcare providers in Palo Alto may charge patients or other individuals, primary insurers, secondary insurers, and other payers, excluding government payers? That language is very similar to what is in front of you, but it removes references to healthcare costs, and the reason for doing so is simple and important. This initiative does not regulate healthcare costs. The references to healthcare costs in the ballot question would be inaccurate and misleading to voters. The costs of healthcare are determined by numerous factors, ranging from the cost of labor to patient care equipment. The initiative does not in any way limit these costs. Rather, the initiative seeks to limit the payments made to healthcare providers. In fact, the sponsors of this initiative, which also exist in two other cities in Northern California, Emeryville and Livermore, have already taken the position in court pleadings that this type of initiative actually encourages healthcare providers to increase their expenditures. This initiative does not limit healthcare costs. Therefore, stating to the voters that the initiative limits healthcare costs is misleading, and it's inaccurate. Our revised statement corrects these concerns by referencing, by referring to limits on the amount that providers may charge. Plus, as an added bonus, our version is also shorter, and therefore more understandable to the voters. So we request that the city council amend the ballot question as stated above. Thank you for your attention to this important issue, especially so late in the evening.
Thank you. The next speaker for five people is Quinn McKenna for John Cowan, Jen Toral, Mary Stutz, and Ms. Hiko Tenabi.
Good evening. My name is Quinn McKenna. I'm the Chief Operating Officer of Stanford Healthcare. I'm here to talk about how harmful the UHW initiative would be, not only for Palo Alto healthcare providers, but for the entire Palo Alto community. I respectfully ask you, as the members of the city council, to oppose this measure and to ensure that the ballot label is accurate and fair. The initiative claims to limit healthcare costs, but it does not limit the rates that insured patients and employers actually pay to insurance companies. Under this initiative, the insurance companies are actually the big winners. This initiative would limit the services Palo Alto healthcare providers can deliver by restricting funds for community healthcare programs and services. This initiative does nothing to improve access, patient safety, or quality of care. All of this will come at an enormous price to the city and taxpayers. Last week, and we all had the opportunity to listen to the discussion last week, and are grateful to be here again tonight, while you voiced your concerns about how much this ballot initiative would cost to enforce, while we have not yet determined the exact costs, we do know that healthcare oversight is expensive. We also know that the city does not currently have the experience or staffing expertise to provide this oversight. Stanford Healthcare will conduct our own in-depth study of the impact of this initiative, but we can say for certain that preparing and evaluation of every patient bill covered by this initiative will be a massive undertaking. For example, at Stanford Healthcare, we employ hundreds of people in our billing department. The city's proposed 2019 budget, I believe, calls for 38 full-time employees in your entire administrative services department, which would be tasked with monitoring and oversight of patient billing for all providers in Palo Alto and Stanford. It's possible that hundreds of people would be needed to be employed directly or through private contractors to audit multiples, hundreds of thousands of patient bills, individual patient bills, as well as potential rebates. The paperwork this initiative will require appears to be overwhelming and potentially budget busting at the end of the conversation we've just had. UHW's assertion that city costs would be covered by the fees or penalties extracted from providers is ridiculous. The initiative's already dramatically underfunded Palo Alto healthcare providers as a matter of policy, and UHW asserts that Palo Alto healthcare providers would have to pay more money on top of that to fund the city's administrative burdens. If that were the case, the devastation to patient care in Palo Alto, as well as Palo Alto healthcare providers, would be even more extraordinary, while being a significant windfall to insurance companies, and not the city or the citizens of the community. This initiative is bad for Palo Alto in every way possible. Our medical professionals have said so, our financial experts have said so, and we believe the voters of Palo Alto will do the same. I repeat, I respectfully ask that the members of the city council oppose this measure and ensure that the ballot is accurate and fair. Thank you.
Thank you. And Liz Velardo, speaking for James McSood, Andrew Epstein, Andy Cohen, David Jones.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Liz Velardo. I'm the CEO and President of the Palo Alto Medical Foundation. I'm also a physician. I'm an internal medicine physician. I specialize in primary care. Our organization has been in this community since 1930. We've grown to take care of over a million patients and have services in almost all specialties. We have 1,500 physicians that work for us directly. We cover six counties now, including Santa Clara, San Mateo, Santa Cruz, Alameda, and Monterey, in order to take care of our growing patients. I'd like to take a minute to talk to you about the overwhelming consequences of the UHW initiative would have on our organization and on the entire community, both the provider community and Palo Alto itself. This measure would dramatically limit the healthcare services and community benefits we are able to provide to Palo Alto. Also, it would limit access to care for Palo Alto residents, hurting individual medical practices, mental health providers, physician groups, hospitals, and everything in between, large and small. Similarly, the initiative would impact the city of Palo Alto's ability to provide public services, as funds would be shifted to cover the cost of implementing this new law. Palo Alto does not have the money or expertise. Palo Alto does not have the money or expertise to regulate healthcare providers, nor should Hospitals, physicians, dentists, and all other healthcare providers are regulated, and the initiative is not necessary. All of these costs come with no benefit to Palo Alto. This measure does not address healthcare costs. It does nothing to improve the quality of care or the safety of patients. It does the opposite, takes attention away from care of patients, and it's a backward step for this wonderful community. I respectfully ask, on behalf of the Palo Alto Medical Foundation, that you oppose this measure as a council, and that you seek to change the labeling such that it fully reflects the substance of this bill. Thank you so much for your time and attention and your service to our community.
Thank you. That ends our multiple speakers, and we go to single speakers now. Olga Grudjic, Brian Dorsey, Tanya Komarova. Greetings.
Good evening. Thank you very much. My name is Olga Grudjic. I'm a Stanford employee, but more importantly, I'm a Stanford patient. I was diagnosed with cancer about a year ago and am a Stanford Cancer Center patient and have been so with a choice. I've had, I have a lot of choices of where I can get my healthcare, and I choose to go to Stanford because of the level of care that I receive and the compassion that every provider gives to me as they see me. I'm doing well for now, but I know that my condition will worsen over time and am comforted by the knowledge that Stanford Healthcare has an integrative medicine center that, when the time comes, will actually help me cope. When that no longer works, Stanford also has an amazing palliative care program that will help me deal with my pain. And so I'm afraid that this initiative will limit my access to all of that excellence and will prevent me from getting the best care possible. I urge you again to support the hospitals and the healthcare and the phenomenal research that Stanford does every day and that provides hope and for patients like me. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. For those of you who have been here before, if you will not clap or shout, but do something like that, it is otherwise intimidating for speakers, and we want you all to really feel comfortable in here. So the next person is Brian Dorsey, followed by Tanya Komarova.
Good evening. I'm just here to lend my voice on my experiences as a Stanford patient. In 2015, I sustained a knee injury from playing competitive soccer and chose to undergo knee surgery at Stanford's Redwood City Outpatient Center. During my initial surgery, I contracted a staph infection introduced by the insertion of my ACL graft. The symptoms of my infection were neglected in multiple post-operative appointments until the point where I became septic. The infection resulted in severely lowered red blood cell counts and liver complications. I had an additional two debridement surgeries immediately following that were unsuccessful in saving the repairs, so they had to clear everything out of my knee to remove the infection. Six months later, I had a fourth surgery to perform just an ACL reconstruction. This time, it was successful, but due to the infection and number, and the number of surgeries, I was unable to return to the same active lifestyle I had before. My bad outcome came from a routine arthroscopic minimally invasive surgery with extremely low infection risk. If these complications happened in my case, I imagine there have been many other hospital-acquired infections at Stanford from major surgeries that resulted in even worse outcomes than my own. I chose Stanford for their reputation as a top hospital, expecting to receive the best possible care reflective of the cost, and in light of the wider incidence of infections reported, this is an issue I feel that Stanford should address. Thank you.
Thank you. Tanya Komarova and Dan Walls.
Hello, good evening. My name is Tatiana. I'm so sorry, I speak only Russian because Sophia helped me, okay? Thank you. My client, по состоянию здоровья, должен посещать медицинский центр три раза в неделю, в месяц. И у него очень сложное заболевание, у него рак. И последний раз у него был прием в 11:30. Но перед этой процедурой он должен сдавать анализ крови. И он приехал к 10:30. В 11:30 его не приняли, потому что врач был занят, так как на это время был записан еще один человек. Приводи.
Could you move next to the mic?
Yes. Her name is Tatiana, and she's working with 80-years-old patient Alex and who are visiting Stanford Hospital. Her patient has cancer. Due to this health condition, he drives to Stanford Hospital every three weeks for chemotherapy. Last week, he had an appointment at 11:30 a.m. for chemotherapy. He always arrives for the appointment, he always arrives for the appointment hour earlier to do a blood test, so he arrived at 10:30 a.m. He waited for an hour until his start of the procedure, but the doctor did not see him at 11:30 a.m. because the doctor was still busy with the prior appointment.
So your time is about to run out, so if you can sum it up for her, that would be nice.
Okay, I will. After some time, he was taken for the procedure, but it turned out they ran out of some component needed for the chemotherapy. And he had to wait for a very long time until they received the missing element. Due to this situation and the long wait, the patient was, he was uncomfortable and feeling, and feeling bad. In total, he spent more than seven hours at the clinic and was able to leave only after 5:00 p.m.
Can you wrap up, please?
I think, I think we understand.
You understand that he was waiting seven, seven hours for his treatment?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. The next speaker is Dan Walls, followed by Carliza Marcos.
Hello, I'm a graduate student at Stanford. I spoke last week, so thank you for listening to me again. I'm going to try and summarize some of the things that my colleagues said. They couldn't join me tonight. So I'm a former representative on the Graduate Student Council. The student council sent a letter to Stanford Healthcare leadership in March regarding this ballot initiative. The letter didn't specifically endorse it, but it asked that Stanford Healthcare address the high costs and rates of infection relative to other research hospitals in the area. We met with the government and community relations officer as a result of the letter, but we left the meeting largely without the points of the letter being clearly addressed. As graduate students, Stanford Hospital is our only provider in the, like, top tier that we have in our insurance plans, which carries a large premiums relative to our income. We want to be able to seek safe and affordable care. A lot of the responses from Stanford Healthcare here and in the media seem to deflect from the key critiques of costs and patient safety when they should be addressing them. I support this ballot initiative, which hopes to achieve that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Carliza, and then David Entwistle.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Carliza Marcos. I'm a local dentist, and I also represent the San Mateo County Dentist on the California Dental Association Board of Trustees. Dentists oppose this initiative put forward by the UHW because it is misleading and misguided. The proponents' claims are wrong. The initiative does not reduce the costs of care. It does not increase patient safety. It establishes arbitrary mandates and prescribes that dentists and other providers give rebates back to the insurance companies. The insurance companies, in turn, are not required to give these rebates back to the consumers. Thus, it does not, it does nothing to limit the premiums that patients actually pay. The initiative limits my fellow dentist's ability to operate a viable dental practice because they have a Palo Alto street address. Intentional or otherwise, this initiative would squeeze dentists to the point that some would have to consider closing or relocating out of Palo Alto. Access to quality healthcare is so important to the health and well-being of Palo Alto residents. I am confident that I speak for all Palo Alto health providers when I say that they want to continue serving Palo Alto in Palo Alto. I ask that you ensure that the ballot label presented to the Palo Alto voters be factual representation of the proposed policy. Their healthcare is at stake, and providing them accurate description of the initiative is critical. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. David Entwistle, Mark Weiss, and then Veronica Lowry.
Good evening, council. I'm David Entwistle, the president and CEO of Stanford Healthcare, and I, first of all, want to thank this council for taking the time to understand this ballot initiative and spend the time to truly understand where the impact is. I also want to thank you, in addition to that, thank you for helping to make sure that the language on this ballot is correct. As was described earlier, if we can get that language right, we help the voter of Palo Alto to understand where this is, and we think that it's a bit misleading now and want to make sure that that is corrected. This initiative, we are opposed to. It's obviously in the comments. We don't think this is good for the citizens of Palo Alto. We don't think it's good for the city of Palo Alto. It does not reduce costs. It does not increase quality. It limits, and will limit, if it goes through, it will limit the access to healthcare, and therefore, we're opposed to that. And we have a number of folks that are opposed to that this evening, and I'd like to take a moment to ask them to stand and show of their opposition to this measure. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank, thank all of you for coming tonight, regardless of what side you're on. It's a great example of a public process. So our last speaker, Mark Weiss, and then Veronica Lowry. Nope. Veronica, are you here?
My name is Veronica Lowry, and I work at Stanford Children's Hospital. And I had the opportunity to do some precinct walking, where we knocked on doors to have the city of Palo Alto look at the ballot and sign signatures. And while we were knocking on doors, we ran into several people who had stories to tell. One lady told me that I will sign that right away. My son was so sick, and I took him to the ER, and for three tests that they performed at Stanford, it was $22,000 I got a bill for, and it was much more than I could pay. Several other ones said that they went to Stanford for procedures and they came back with infection, so they were willing to sign. So I asked the city council to please let the voters have their say about this ballot initiative, and I support it. Thank you.
Thank you again. Thank you all for being here tonight. I have one light on from Councilmember Scharf. I'll call on him first, and then if others of you have, Lady, I see yours going on after his. Pardon?
I thought the city attorney or staff.
Okay. Did you, did you indicate you wanted to add something?
Why don't we hear council's questions, and then I'll make a comment if it's appropriate?
Great. Questions and hold the motion?
The motion is fine.
Okay. A motion is fine when you're ready.
Either way. So Councilmember Scharf, you're first, and then Councilmember Coop.
Thank you, and thank you all for coming out tonight and staying so late. You know, it's almost 11 o'clock. So I'll be brief. I really appreciated all the speakers. I would move the city attorney's language that you could put up on the board with the following changes. If we could just take out the words "type and" and the words "of healthcare costs."
I think you can all read that, but we'll, we'll correct the typos, but seeing, seeing that now in front of us, you had a motion, and I will second it. Councilmember Scharf.
So wait for it. I need to get it right in there. So it's to, so the problem is to be amended to regulate and limit the, and limit, and limit the.
Your own healthcare costs.
It's right. It's to limit the amount, right? That hospital, so healthcare costs go out. Of healthcare costs need to go out. The amount that hospitals, medical clinics, and other healthcare providers, correct. All right, thank you. Got it?
Slightly different, yeah.
He did not want "type and." The exception.
He's going by Molly's motion.
But Molly's motion says "type and."
This is.
That's Molly.
We can have it corrected. Molly, I want to make sure we have gotten correct, gotten correctly here. Do you see anything that ought to be changed? Do you want to speak to your motion?
Yes, did you second it?
Yes, I did.
So yes, obviously, we're going to put this on the ballot. That's the right thing to do. I think it's just really important to get it accurate. I think several of the speakers set forth some of their concerns about why they didn't think it was factually accurate. I think they were persuasive, and therefore, with these minor adjustments, I think we should move forward and let the Palo Alto voters decide where they are on this.
And I'm supporting this as well because I think Greg's argument is good. I would also add to this. I would also add to this, that this is really mixing your apples and oranges pretty dramatically when the city gets involved in, in health care. This is not something that we normally do. It's not something that we are staffed to do, and I think this, this would put a substantial burden on our city. So with that, Councilmember Koo?
So Molly, I just wanted to ask something. So, the city powers, right, so the initiative kind of seeks what it's seeking, it's not really within our powers to dictate what kind of pricing they can have? I mean, yeah, right?
So, a couple of comments. The, the initiative does establish a local ordinance that would have the city oversee a limitation and a regulation on the types of costs and the amounts of the costs that can be actually then charged to people who pay, whether those are insurers, or patients, or secondary insurers, et cetera, but not, not government entities. And so it does, it does purport to do that, and I, I can see by your reaction that you're surprised by that because that's a novel idea. And there are some questions about its legality. Health care providers in other jurisdictions have participated along with cities in raising questions about the ability of general law cities to actually have this type of regulation.
Oh, general law?
Yes, we are a charter city, and so our issues may be a little different. But the, the place this is at procedurally is that it has sufficient signatures to qualify for the ballot. And there is a presumption in California law that the next step is for the voters to have their say about whether they believe this is a good policy and something they want for our community.
Right.
If they don't, then we're finished with this conversation at this time. If they do, then there's going to be time for legal issues to be raised, and I'm certain that with well-funded and strong advocates on both sides, there will be proceedings in court about what is the permissible extent of regulation in this area.
Okay, yeah, so, so, thank you for that. You know, I mean, I, I do respect that they, they did go out and get the signatures, and they do qualify for going on the ballot. But thank you. I just wanted to make sure, you know, the scope, and thank you.
I have another, no other questions, city attorneys, so if you wish to comment.
I have no further comment.
Okay, in that case, we have a motion and a second. I see no further lights. I suggest we vote on the board. And that passes unanimously of those who are still here. Councilmember Tanaka left, and Councilmember DuBois also had to leave. So, thank you all for being here. That does end the item for tonight.
With that, we will return the meeting to order and take up the next item, which is adoption of a resolution calling for a special election for November 6, 2018, to place a ballot measure before voters to increase the city's transient occupancy tax by two percentage points. Is there a staff discussion?
Thank you, very short, Mr. Vice Mayor. So this is the second election item that's back before you tonight. We did have a little bit of a disconnect on the title, so just to point out, the actual report has the correct title. This is not a special election. It's the general municipal election, and we're adding this item to it. So there are two things before the council this evening where you will need to make decisions. This is, there is also a resolution here calling an election to increase the TOT, so we would assume there'd be a vote of council that, yes, you indeed want to do that. It is drafted for a 2% increase. Council could tonight direct a different increase that it would be lesser. You, you don't have the ability to increase the amount, but you could, you could reduce it if you want a lower amount of the TOT increase. And then the second issue is that, in this case, we, we need council to make a policy decision about the, the form of the ballot language also, and there are two options that we have presented to you. These were developed with city staff, working also with the outside consultant who has been our political pollster on this. And, and the, they polled two different versions, slightly different versions. One, and these are on page three of the staff report. The second one is magic language, if you will, that will be required if the Business Roundtable Initiative qualifies for the ballot and is approved by statewide voters in November. That Business Roundtable, it's called the Tax Fairness or something like that initiative, it, it would make major changes to the way that local government taxes and fees can be imposed and raised. And retroactively, at least that's what it says, it would require 2/3 vote approval instead of 50% plus one, and it would require that this particular phrase actually appear in the ballot question, "and for unrestricted general revenue purposes." So this was polled. The, the first example is the way that staff would propose to do the language if the Business Roundtable Initiative doesn't pass, which is to say "and for other city services." And there was a small difference in, it was within the margin of error, I'm told. I'm not a statistician, but there was a small difference in the support. It did, in the telephone survey, support did go down a few percentage points with the Business Roundtable language. So that is a decision, a sort of strategic decision, if you will, for, for council to make. Now, we did get some information, I don't know if, Jim, you saw that, the finance folks had a conversation with the pollster today and asked about what other jurisdictions are doing.
Generally, it relates to the Business Roundtable language?
Yes. That few cities have gotten as far as deciding whether to include it.
This doesn't shift the, the voting percentages that we would need when we pass this, correct?
The Business Roundtable Initiative would do that. Unless, unless the courts invalidated some or parts or all of it, it, it would retroactively for any tax imposed in calendar year 2018 would require a 2/3 majority.
Right, but the, the idea could be that we, if that failed, if we put the CBRI language in for unrestricted general revenue purposes, all we would need is a majority vote of that language to pass for our council to, you know, exercise a, the TOT being put into place, assuming there's no decision on CBRI, or that it fails.
Correct.
Okay. But the fact is, if it, if it didn't fail, we would then have to go back and meet the test of having a 2/3 vote?
Unless that provision is invalidated by the courts.
Waiting to hear if there's more from staff before I go to the rest of the council. So, does staff want to give us information that you've got from the pollster, or is there something you'd like to add that we don't have?
I'm just reorienting myself. Good evening, council. In talking with our pollsters, they, there's nothing definitive about whether or not it's going to make the ballot. It hasn't qualified yet. Last day is as of June 28th to have it be validated, but the consensus right now, so this is not fact, the consensus is that it will pass, I'm sorry, it will qualify, not pass, it will qualify. And so then we asked them generally, are, there are a number of jurisdictions going after various ballot measures, not necessarily TOT, but in general. And so the unrestricted general revenue purposes language, we, as a city Palo Alto, are a little ahead of other cities, and they haven't necessarily made this decision yet. And so he thinks that the key issue is actually not that language specifically in the ballot, but whether we might get to 2/3. And so, in general, if you look at the polling, when you have the language in it, the polling, the measure drops five percentage points, so it polled at 67% passage without the language. It polled at 62% passage with the Business Roundtable passage language in there, so...
So, so, if I can jump in, so as I understand it, though, I mean, so we're hedging our bets here, right? We're close to a 2/3 vote with the unrestricted general revenue purposes, and it makes some sense as to why that polls a little bit lower than city services, right? It hits unrestricted, and it hits general revenue. So you hear that at times, people say, well, what's that going to go for? But it is potentially, could pass with 2/3. If it doesn't pass with 2/3, as long as we have a majority and the, and the, that ballot initiative, it doesn't pass, we're still good. We're, you know, we've gotten a majority vote with this language in here, and we've got a approval for the TOT. So the real question is, if you have this in and the CBRI thing does pass, then, you know, if we don't have this language, what we pass would have to be, I mean, we'd have to go out again. My own particular recommendation would be, I tend to think we should put this, put it with this language in, assuming that you want to make up those extra points, and I don't think we did necessarily super detailed polling on what happens when you've got the pro and con arguments and you have some sort of a campaign out there. It's just for you to think about. But on the other hand, if you want to go with the other city services, let me just restate it again, what that means is, if we had this pass with 50%, and it wasn't this thing, we would be good. If we had it pass with, with 60, 67% over 2/3, and we didn't have this language, it would fail, right? I mean, this would be invalid. The other city services, right? So, I mean, sort of which way you, you know, how do you want to hedge your options?
Remind me what, what, it won the last time, what was, what was the percentage?
It was about 70%.
Roughly?
Yeah, 74, I think.
71? Okay, so it's maybe a little dicey. Are you counting up to see what we need to, to get a vote on it tonight?
Yeah.
Because there are seven of us left.
Not less than 2/3. What? In order for you to vote on this, you have to have a 2/3 vote of the council.
So that's five of us?
No. No. It's 2/3, it's...
Six. Oh, 2/3 of the nine.
Yes.
Oh. I thought we needed 2/3 of what was left. Wow, well, that's, that's a challenge, isn't it? Well, in that case, that sort of tells us where we are.
We need six out of nine. We need six out of seven, right?
Well, six out of seven in this case. Do you all agree that we need six votes?
That's preferable.
It's preferable. The CBRI measure is complex, and it will also be subject to litigation, and there are no doubt parts of it that won't survive. This particular part I have a question about. If, if it does say that, so yes, if you'd like to completely comply with it, six would be enough.
Okay. Okay, then, in that case, there certainly is no one left from the public, I, I don't believe, who's going to want to speak to us tonight. In that case, then, I think councilmen are fine. You had your light on first.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, staff, for this. I've certainly expressed some hesitation at the TOT tax to fund some of our infrastructure gap issues, but I think we've debated those a number of times, and we've also talked about prioritization, and we may have more pencil sharpening to do our individual project delivery, but this seems to be the way we're going, and I think we should go forth wholeheartedly. So I'll move the staff recommendation with the CBRI language. Thank you. And just to speak to it, so as I mentioned, we have debated this TOT. This will provide funding to begin covering our infrastructure gap, which has been driven by cost increases and also by council's appetite for infrastructure spending. And on the language choice, I think the only case in which using CBRI hurts us, hurts us, is if that language choice puts us below 50%, which I think is highly unlikely. In every other case, it's superior to not using the CBRI language. So it seems like the safer choice. I think, you know, this council and our city probably has some hesitations about CBRI in general, and we might revisit it later to take a position on it. But we're, we're covering ourselves and not risking much. So I would encourage us all to support this tonight.
But I'm there. I, I looked up the number. It was 76.28% affirmative on the vote. 76.28.
The second on this?
Yeah, I'll just be really brief, because it's late. I think this will, I agree with everything Adrian said. I think this will ensure that we can get our, our infrastructure plan done and actually hopefully have... we can get our, our infrastructure plan done and actually hopefully have some money left over for buying some of those parks we've talked about, if some of that comes available, or helping out with the animal shelter and those kinds of things as well. So I think it's really important. I think it also helps the cash flow significantly, depending on when the Marriott's come online. So I think that's really important as well.
Oh, I think, Corey, you are next, followed by Eric. No, don't bother. Okay. Eric, go ahead.
Yeah. Well, I think we've been through this a number of times, right? You know, we need to get the infrastructure plan done. I really want to fund some community, some of the things on the community amenities list. I think it's time. I think we spent a lot of, a lot of time and effort on, on infrastructure and some other things. We've done stuff like, you know, residential parking and so forth, which, you know, basically solves some problems that were there before, but doesn't give the community anything. Meanwhile, you know, we've seen a big increase in, you know, in traffic and congestion and other kinds of things. I want to invest in the community, right? And I think that if we do this, as the, the finance chair just said, if other things work out right, it gives us the possibility to actually do some of that with this. Whereas if we don't do this, then I don't see any way we can fund any of that kind of stuff. And I really want to do that. I really want to buy the AT&amp;T acre next to Woolware Park, for example, right? You know, we'll have no chance to do that if we don't, if we don't do something here. So I think we ought to do it.
I just want to make sure I heard something correctly. Are you saying that six of us would need to vote in favor of this to pass it?
If the C B R I qualifies for the ballot, is approved by voters, and that provision is upheld by the courts, then, yes, it would require two-thirds vote of the council to put it on. Because that's a new term that would be added to the California Constitution, that in order for a tax to be, a new tax to be imposed, it would take two-thirds vote of the governing body to place it on the ballot, and then approval by two-thirds of voters.
Both of those, of course, we have no idea what that outcome's going to be.
Correct. Both in, both at the ballot box and in litigation.
So I'm in a bit of an awkward, I guess for lack of a better word, I was in awkward position, because I really don't support the initiative, or the ballot measure. But I also don't feel good about being a vote that would keep the council majority from putting something to the voters. That feels kind of like not a, not a good thing to do. So that's kind of a, kind of a rock and a hard place situation, isn't it? So gee, what am I offered? No. Just kidding, just kidding.
Seven-year tree trimming.
Well, tree trimming was already passed, so, yeah.
So keep talking to me, keep talking to me. So, so, yeah, it's, it's a strange position to be in. It's a very strange position to be in. I mean, I know what I'm going to do, but it just, it's an odd position to be in, very odd. Just to be clear, the reasons that I, I'm not, a couple of the reasons at least, that I'm not in favor of the, of the T O T, and I need to be clear about that tonight, so I'm not just like voting for it and then, you know, feel like I'm, you know, betraying that vote, you know, by not supporting it, by not supporting the initiative, excuse me, the ballot measure, is, you know, like I said last week, I think going to the highest T O T in the state is rather egotistical. I don't think it's going to play well with the public. And I think trying to raise additional monies by, you know, a tax is not clearly indicating that, I'll put this, not, not clearly taking responsibility for the fact that I think we could do a better job of, of how we, how we spend money. And I think before we ask for more money, we ought to be doing a better job of how we spend money, and being more, being more prudent on that front. It's also an odd thing to say tonight when we passed a budget that, that is balanced, but, you know, we're also looking for ways to, how we can save, save money, $4 million from that. So it's, it's an interesting, it's kind of like a Fellini movie, I feel like, for me. But I also think that the hotels spoke last week, and I think it is a different environment than it was when we passed the T O T the last time. We have more hotels, two more hotels just in Palo Alto, other communities are building The Cardinal Hotel said that they were not booked up for the Stanford graduation last year or this year, and referenced other hotels that weren't booked up either, which is a change from what the past pattern has been. So I think, I give some, I give some gravity to their comments about the climate and the situation. So I will, I will support this, because I think the, the fair thing to do really is not, not hold this hostage, but I'm, I'm not actually in supportive of it. And if you still want to make offers, I'm, I'm open. I don't know if this is going to help you any, Karen, but I've, I've not only struggled with this, I'm going to suggest an amendment. We might have to negotiate it, but I'm looking at the maker of the motion, and I'm going to suggest 15.5 be our number instead of 16%. I'm, and I'll tell you why. I'm uncomfortable, as we say, with the optics of this. I don't want to be the one city in the country that is running at 16% T O T. I'm finding that's very, very awkward. I may have a, an advantage tonight. I think I am counting these votes, as did Karen, and I'm actually thinking, hmm. That's a friendly amendment so far.
So I'm, I'm not.
You won't accept it?
All right, for the animal shelter, too.
I want to buy the park, and I think, I think that's important. I think we need to have the flexibility, and I don't think it makes really a lot of difference.
So I, I won't accept it, and for two reasons. So one, I believe the last time we went out with the T O T, we had a higher option, but we actually chose the lower one, and it hasn't been able to fund the ongoing gap in our infrastructure fund. So the first time, we kind of had a plan to go higher, and we undershot it. The second time, given the institutional and organizational costs, I, I think we should be asking for the 2%. Furthermore, if you're worried about us being the, one of the top hotel taxes in the state, it doesn't matter if you're number one or two. I think we're already in that position and in that league, with a marginal difference of 50 basis points, doesn't matter.
It, it matters to me, and not to be difficult about it, but, but I can't support that. So you guys can decide what to do from there. Councilmember Koo?
So you're putting both language on the ballot, Molly? The no C B R I and the one with C B R I, is that how it goes?
I'm sorry, your question is, you need to pick one of those.
Oh, one of those?
Yes.
I see, I see, I see. Okay. So, so I guess making amendment going to 1% won't work, given yours is at 1.5. I, I was actually very disappointed that we didn't explore other means of generating revenue and just kind of tagged on to this and the trans, the documentary tax, which I'm glad that we don't have on, but now we're only left with the T O T when we should have explored of wider means of generating revenue. And I do have to say, you know, I, I feel like the hotel folks are being targeted on this. Then of course, I'm also very concerned of, of all the rising costs to all the infrastructure and all the CPI projects that we have. So I don't know what is going to be left over for things that we want, such as the AT&amp;T park and, and other community asset projects. So I won't be able to support this either.
What were you saying you could support?
One.
One, not one and a half? Okay, guys.
Well, I mean, as far as I understand it from the city attorney, we actually only need five votes tonight. It's only if C B R I passes, we would need the two-thirds majority. So I'd appreciate your support on this. I've been one of the less ardent supporters of this T O T for many of the reasons that councilmember Holman and councilmember Koo brought up. Nonetheless, I think we do have to respect some of the process and inertia that was started with this infrastructure plan back in 2012. That's what was planned out, it was based on T O T increases, and councilmember Koo is absolutely correct, it, it does seem a little bit like we're punishing the hoteliers. But let's be honest, we also polled our own folks, and people in Palo Alto weren't willing to pay a partial tax for this. So we've identified T O T as one way to, in effect, tax businesses to pay for some of our infrastructure upgrades in the city. And I think if we're going to ask for it, 2% is the amount we've projected and the amount we should aim for.
Okay, councilmember Holman.
Yeah, let me back up here. So what happens if only five councilmembers vote for it and C B I, C B R I passes? What I understand, understood earlier is like six have to pass it.
According to the terms of the C B R I, this would not have been, then complied with the procedures in that initiative. What I can't tell you is whether those provisions of the C B R I, C B R I initiative will ultimately be affirmed by the court and held to be retroactive, as it purports to be. I think there is some question about whether that survives a legal challenge.
You're saying six is very safe, five could pass it.
Five, five is, under your current rules, five will put this on the ballot, and the voters will vote on it in November. If you had six, and you get two-thirds, and you use the right language, then you're safe even if the C B R I measure passes and survives litigation. Okay. So, have you got five?
I think I gave you a very reasonable offer at 15.5 and indicated exactly why. I think that the optics of this really trouble me. We, there's, I can't remember how, how few there are who actually have any tax this high other than Anaheim and maybe New York City.
And so some of the other cities we looked at, and I did a bit of research, they layer on top of the T O T things like tourism tax, impact taxes, which lift them up.
Remember, we tried, we tried coming at some other taxes, and our city attorney was very.
Hesitant.
Was, was uncomfortable with that.
Yes. But the total in other cities is higher than what we're aiming for here in Palo Alto. And as we just looked at, there was an awesome graph in the budget hearing we just had, where it was looking at the increases in the T O T and the vacancy rates and the amount we're raising from it. And just a cursory look at that shows, I believe, that these, these taxes are supportable.
Karen wasn't done, sorry.
So I think you gentlemen have been outmaneuvered by the mayor. Because to get six votes, she's offered one and a half percent, which is better than 2%. And to get six, I think you need.
Can you go with five and a, with 15 and a half?
Well, I was going to vote for the 16, just to see that it got on the ballot, but I think your alternative is at least better somewhat. So I would, I would support that ahead of a 16%.
See if we can convince Lydia. Any chance, Lydia, you could go to 15 and a half?
Well, maybe, maybe.
How about 15.75? That meets your thing, but it's literally a $5 million issue.
Listen, councilmember Koo was at, at 15. I'm not going to negotiate her up to .75. Could you go with 15.5? I know it's a stretch.
You won't get your park.
You know, you're not going to get everything. Isn't that a surprise?
You know, it's just unfortunate.
I want that park.
When that park comes by.
Wait a minute, let Lydia, let Lydia finish, she still had the mic.
No, I, I really want that park, though. I mean.
But then maybe you're at six.
That 15.5, you know.
You could go with 15.5. I'm not done. You could go with 15.5?
We can add the park.
This is the first auction I've done in real lifetime.
So, mayor, we go at 15.5 and we add the AT&amp;T park to the, to the measure.
You want the park in the motion?
Uh huh.
How about consider the park in the motion? We can't do that. Have we got to keep it clean?
Oh, put down your mic.
In other words, we are talking about, we're negotiating here at 15.5 versus 16.
But at 15.5, there's no money to buy the park. That's the difference.
Sure there is, you get rid of something else.
Parking garage?
Of course there is, yeah, the parking garage, that could go first.
The bike and pedestrian plan?
Fine with me.
Phase two of that.
Yes, so.
Yeah, we do, we could, yeah.
Poor David. What do I type?
So Lydia, I think some way or another, we'll get you a park. But in the meantime, we need to see if we can get a vote.
15.75 could be the, the.
Of course, an employee headcount tax could have gotten us a lot more, too.
But then you'd have nothing.
You're going to use that for grade separation.
You'd have nothing for grade separations.
They could have been banking it in the meantime.
You have to bond against it, that's the problem.
I just need to know if there are three of us for 15.5, and I think I hear Lydia saying, Yes, no? What?
We're going to need grade separation money in a big way, and as a better nexus with business and funding grade sep at a higher level than I think than our, a mix of our infrastructure projects. It just, it's going to be a more compelling argument in 2020 or something.
Okay, I think it's Phil Seth and then Walbach, or vice versa, I don't know, both your lights have gone on.
I'm just going to remark that, so, I've heard the argument that the cosmetics of, you know, 15 and a half versus 16 and so forth, I'm just going to observe that a half percent amounts to $1.50 on a $300 hotel bill, okay? But it's a difference of $8 million after you bond it to the city.
It's a very good point, and I might be persuaded, but not tonight. I'm still at 15, I'm at 15.5. You guys might want to give a little bit if you want the votes.
Well, I did say 15.75, that's giving a little bit. That's exactly giving a little bit, and it meets your thing of not being at 16.
It's too close, I want to be 15.5.
They're on at least.
So the motion on the floor is for, for 2%. Corey, sorry.
Actually, it's not, you offered one and a half, and I was, maybe it wasn't clear, I was, I was, I was offering to, I was offering to second that, because I said the guys have been outmaneuvered by you.
Oh, okay, well, in that case, then, we have an amendment.
May I speak?
You can't now, because there's an amendment. Or you can speak to the amendment after Karen and I speak to the amendment. Okay, Karen.
Sorry. Yeah, are they all off?
I think I did speak to it, and what it seems to me is, so we don't drag this out ad nauseam, what it seems to me is, we've got four people who want 2%, and two people that want one and a half percent, I'm being kind of drug along into this. But, you know, and, and Lydia. But, you know, and Lydia's kind of not declared, so for this to get on the ballot, it seems to me that one and a half percent should prevail.
Okay, and I certainly have said sufficient by now. Lydia, do you want to speak to this one? This is the amendment.
No, thank you.
Okay, yeah. Okay, we've spoke, Councilmember Fine.
So...
To the amendment.
I appreciate if we didn't try to game each other. We'll just try to be honest and straight with each other up here. I think two percentage points is advantageous, given how rarely we go out for new revenue, and whether it is the AT&amp;T Park, whether it is new dog parks, whether it is bike stuff or whatever, it's not very often we get a chance to do this, and I think if we're going to put the institutional effort and our political effort behind this happening, we should ask for the 2%. As the vice mayor just noted, a half percentage point is how much?
Eight million.
Eight million to the city.
Annually, or total? Okay, eight million, Omeal of over, eight million.
Over many years.
Eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, so over 10 years with an allowance, it's eight million.
So that eight million dollars is the one floor of the Calaf Garage that staff asked us to remove, and we didn't.
But it actually leverages more.
Yeah, because you can make...
There are more hotels that come online over time.
Yeah.
And so it actually leverages a lot more.
If we get more hotels, we get more from old hotels.
Yes.
So I would encourage my colleagues to vote against the amendment respectfully, Mayor and Councilmember Holman, and support the original motion.
You might want to think about the rest of the evening.
If this loses, then we're going to...
Okay, do you want to vote?
Can I speak to...
Sure. Yeah, sorry.
A couple of thoughts. I'm going to try and keep it quick because it's almost midnight, but I haven't spoken to any of this. Something we talk a lot about is who pays, right? Who are we asking to pay? You know? Who's being asked to dig into their pockets? Charging hoteliers is not charging Palo Alto residents. I just want to make sure we're thinking about that. So if we're saying that we are worried about asking hoteliers to pay too much, just think about what we're saying. Talk about optics. I think that's important for optics. And as far as a business headcount tax, remember, hoteliers are business, but if we also wanted a business headcount tax, which several of us have indicated we are interested in doing in 2020, we'll need, well, one, finance committee could have discussed that, but they didn't. I wish that they had this year, but they didn't give us the time to get that set up for this ballot. So now we have to do that in 2020. However, there are a couple advantages also to doing the business headcount tax in 2020 as opposed to now. One is, it gives us more time to make sure our city apparatus to collect it effectively will be ready. Secondly, it gives us time to prepare for where that money would be going, whether it goes to the TMA, which is not ready to accept that kind of funding yet, or goes to grade separation, or some mix. Also, while we know that this has a high likelihood of passing in an election like 2018, we don't yet know, or at least I can't remember, how the business license tax would poll, but the 2020 ballot, it would probably, it might pass this year, and it will almost certainly pass in 2020. It'd be an easier ballot. So for a lot of reasons, 2020 seems like the right year to look at that again, like we were looking in 2016, again, looking at presidential election cycles.
Are you speaking to the amendment?
I'm speaking to both, right? I'm trying to put this all in context.
Including a head tax?
Yes. Lydia brought this up, and I wanted to address it. I think it's important, right? And I think the context here is, we are asking every part of our community to chip in. I think it's important that we ask businesses to chip in, it's important that we ask residents to chip in, it's important that we ask hoteliers to chip in. I think that 2% is the right number. I think we spent a lot of time thinking about this and a lot of time talking about it. Is, and the question is really, you know, I'm really asking the maker and secondor of the amendment, do you think that these optics are worth that much city revenue and the things that we can fund for Palo Alto residents, for our community, which will in the end benefit hoteliers, benefit the business community as well, as well as residents? Is it worth that just for some short-term optics gain?
Quite honestly, it was a stretch for me to even go to think about, too. And I probably would have been with Lydia on one, to be honest. I'm troubled for a number of other reasons, and I'm not going to go into them deeply tonight, but I think I've said clearly from the beginning, I could not get really enthused about 16. Lydia, did you have your light on?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay.
In that case, then...
The amendment is to go to one and a half from 2%. Does it not work with six of us? Okay. So this...
Why don't you change your vote, Adrian?
Are you voting against it, Karen?
Adrian voted for the amendment, right?
Right. Am I not seeing this?
Yep, we just gave up.
And it passed?
I was the tepid one pushing the 2%, and you guys all gave up on me, huh?
Well, now we...
I couldn't believe my eyes. Okay, so we're back to the main motion at 15.5?
That was the amendment. The amendment passed.
Right, so the amendment passed, which means that we go back to the main amendment, and we change the main amendment. Yes, sorry, the main motion, the main motion. It's almost midnight.
Well, we don't get the animal shelter, Karen.
And the tree trimming has gone to once every 30 years.
Well, how about...
And forget the history museum.
Do that anyway. So, so I think...
Hey, you know, I didn't have to vote for this at all. I was being very magnanimous earlier and saying I would support it, so...
And you know what? All you're going to do is take one floor off the California street garage. That'll do it. Okay, in that case, then, are you ready to vote, or do you want to speak again? Okay, now you're speaking in the main motion. Okay.
So when we reprioritize, given that we are not going to have as much revenue from this because we've lowered the amount that we're seeking to raise from hotels, I'm going to repeat what I said before. We need to look very closely at whether we can afford and whether we really need a new publicly funded downtown garage. I don't think we do, and that's something we can think about when we get back to reprioritizing.
I still think we have the votes for that garage, Corey.
The outside ramp?
Just so you know. And you know, if Liz wants the outside ramp, we're going to have the outside ramp. We learned that tonight.
Listen, once in a while, you have to prevail, right? On occasion.
It's never share what your pet project is.
Lala, we're just wanting to send you off here with fond memories of what it's like.
But you can't pull all those cars back in the neighborhoods.
So we, the main amendment now says increase the city's TOT to one and a half, one and a half percentage points, and therefore it will be 15.5, and therefore it also means we are not the highest in the country, which I, thank you all, I seriously appreciate the support. It troubled me enormously. So with that, does anyone else want to speak on the motion itself, which is now amended, the amended motion? And if not, let's vote on the board. Okay, that does get us up to six, which is good insurance, Molly. Agreed? Okay, good, and thank you all very much. So that is, with those of us remaining, excluding Tanaka and DeBois and Councilmember Koo voting, no, we're almost at the end of our agenda. Y'all know the word beholden?
Did you make Tom a second? Did you poison Tom?
Scharf didn't hear that, I said, Greg Scharf. You didn't hear me, I said, y'all know the word beholden?
That is funny, I never thought about that. I didn't know he was voting for it.
Yeah. Okay, as usual, this is your chance to make comments, questions, or announcements. Anyone want to announce something? Karen?
I went to the ribbon cutting for the Pierce Park Dog Park.
Oh, and thank you for going.
I think that we need to reprice the board, I'm down now.
I have to say, it's like, I actually went to check it out a couple of days before, too, and it's already very popular. It is so well situated. I mean, it really is. It's very popular, well-done, has landscaping along the sides. Peter Jensen was a part of this, I understand, David, Darren Anderson, I'll get it right there. Darren Anderson has been quite persistent in trying to get this accomplished, and the Parks and Rec Commission, current members and former members were there who have also worked on this. So, anyway, it was very nice to be there, well-attended, and it was a pleasure to do the ribbon cutting with the Parks and Rec Commission members, current and former. So I encourage you to go check it out, it's really a terrific park.
So where does that put us in rankings?
Especially since we're...
We now have, we have three official dog parks, correct?
Yeah, three or four.
Well, I think we have three official, and then there's Jordan kind of thrown in there that's not really official.
Okay.
Councilmember Koo?
So I just want to say thanks to Councilmember Scharf and also to the Santa Clara County Cities Association for approving the MOU and the bylaws for the roundtable. Will you tell them?
What did you do?
So at the Santa Clara County Cities Association, we approved setting up a roundtable for the South Bay in Santa Cruz, which would be the equivalent of what they have in San Mateo County, but now it needs to go to every council. So in fact, I'm hoping we can agendize that really early when we come back in August and get that passed and support it.
I had, I didn't realize you had done it. That's a really good idea. I'm surprised we never did that before. Aren't you?
Been a long time coming.
Okay, with that, does anyone else wish to add anything? If not, I'm sorry, it's not midnight, but we are adjourned.